Excellent. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, Mark Conway, representing the 4th District, Councilman Burnett, representing the 8th District, Councilman Cohen, representing the 1st District, Councilwoman Ramos, representing the 14th District, representing the Mayor's Office. We have, we have a representative from the Mayor's Office here.
Sophia.
Sophia is in the room. I can't see her. There you go. Good to see you, Sophia. Sophia G. in the back. And representing the Office of the President. I see Preston Lewis, representing the Office of the President. All right. This afternoon, the Committee will have a hearing on Resolution 22-0139R, Investigative Hearing, Human Trafficking Investigations and Prosecutions, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Office of the State's Attorney, the Baltimore Police Department, the Baltimore City Fire Department, the Baltimore City Police School, excuse me, the Baltimore City Public School System Police, the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, Homeland Security Investigations, the Maryland State Police, the Maryland United States Attorney's Office, the Maryland Department of Social Services, the Maryland Department of Juvenile Services, the Hope Center, formerly known as the Baltimore Child Abuse Center, Blue Dot, and other collaborators from the Baltimore Human Trafficking Collaborative to provide identified victims of human trafficking with emergency interventions in support of services, to brief the Council on the scope of the human trafficking problem in Baltimore City, current efforts to investigate and prosecute perpetrators of the human trafficking, further strategies that could be implemented to bring these individuals to justice, and resources that are needed to assist survivors of human trafficking. This resolution was introduced on October 3rd, 2022, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Christopher Burnett. And I'll turn it over to Councilman Burnett for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and colleagues. And thank you all for joining us this afternoon. Councilman Burnett, playing multiple roles here today. One is the Councilmember representing the 8th District, also the co-chair of the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative. Back in 2017, which was the last time we had a large hearing like this, was the very first one in a few years to better understand the scale and scope of human trafficking in Baltimore City, the work being done by both city agencies, as well as our community partners. And it was a very informative hearing to learn about the work, a very chilling hearing to hear the stories of survivors of human trafficking, and was the spark to create the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative soon after, which was started in December that year. Today is our first time back in that time period to pull everyone back together, though a lot of us are meeting on a quarterly basis through the collaborative meetings and monthly in our committees. And we'll learn a little bit about that this afternoon from Tom Stack in the Mayor's Office, who's the co-chair of the collaborative. And I'm thankful to have you all here. So with that, we are hoping to learn a lot more about the work being done, as well as areas that could be improved in our response. And so we want to know what the gaps are in the work. Baltimore City is central to this issue, given our proximity to wealth and extreme poverty here in the city and throughout the state of Maryland. Our location along the I-95 corridor, where you have a lot of commercial activity, casinos, gambling, a lot of the things that perpetuate. But most importantly, we have a lot of people who are vulnerable in our city. And where there's vulnerability, folks are taking advantage of that. And so our hope is that we continue to collaborate and work in this space. And I thought it was helpful to have this version of the Public Safety Committee here, all the work being done by the collaborative and our partners, but also, you know, continue our oversight function on this critical issue. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chair. And we have a number of panelists we want to get through today.
Thank you, Member Burnett. And I want to thank you for continuing to bring these bills forward and make sure that we are doing everything we can in our power to give this issue its due diligence and due oversight. We've got a jam-packed meeting today. We've got a lot of folks that we'll hear from in order to get some additional insight. So I'll start working down a list. First, we've got the chairs of the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Commission. And first, we'll hear from the full collaborative. I'm going to give folks an opportunity to come up and speak first. And then we'll go down the line. We've got quite a few people to hear from. So we can start there. And please start with your name and your organization you're representing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and other councilmembers. My name is Thomas Stack. I'm the Anti-Human Trafficking and Sexual Assault Response Manager for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. And I'm also the co-chair of the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative. Back in 2017, I was hired by the Mayor's Office to take this role. At the present time, when I arrived, there was no coordinated effort, zero coordinated effort on human trafficking in the city of Baltimore. There was no task force. There was people doing the work, and we knew who those folks were that were doing the work. But there was no coordinated effort. So I was tasked with immediately starting a task force. And I knew the Councilman Burnett had held a legislative hearing. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend that, although I was invited. So I immediately reached out to the councilmen, and we started the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative. And we chose those words for a reason, "collaborative", because we wanted to have a collaborative effort here in the city. And we literally hit the ground running when Councilman Burnett and I. So we immediately started going out. So the collaborative's mission statement is, the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative is a diverse group of stakeholders working in a collaborative effort to combat human, sex trafficking, and labor trafficking in the city of Baltimore through raising awareness, through trainings and media campaigns, and awareness, supporting state and federal prosecutions. But most importantly, making sure the survivors of human trafficking are provided with services through a trauma-informed, victim-centered approach. So we reached out. We started finding, we had members already doing the work. So we started looking at those. And I used, when I, before I was here, I was with the Governor's Office. And I went to various human trafficking meetings throughout the state. And we had, and we had the same members, but we wanted to have different members. We wanted to have more members. We wanted to think outside the box. So what we did is we started inviting folks from like the liquor board, the fire department, who were not a part of any other task forces in the state, our Civil Rights Division. So we started getting all kinds of members. So we had our first meeting on the 7th of December 2017. We had about 40 stakeholders show up. Since then, we've actually blown up to about, maybe about 50 stakeholders approximately. We have different subcommittees. We have a legislative subcommittee, a public awareness subcommittee, and you'll hear from all these folks, victim services, law enforcement. And our new committee is the medical subcommittee. Since then, we've held a resource fair. We've become the largest task force in the state of Maryland, local task force in the state of Maryland. And we're probably one of the most well-respected task forces. So we've gone from zero to being one of the most well-respected collaboratives in the state of Maryland. We've also received national attention through our Blue Dot program, which you'll be hearing about later. And also, we've presented at national conferences on how we've developed this collaborative. So it's been, it's been, it's been great to do. And I look forward to us being proactive in the future and moving forward. And you'll hear from me a little bit later when Montsy does their report.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. Next, we'll hear from the Public Awareness Committee.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Sauer, and I am the Chair of the Public Awareness Subcommittee. Our mission is to raise awareness on what human trafficking is, how to report it, and also give people the tools to prevent it. We provide trainings for professionals, community members, youth, anyone who we can reach to provide these vital trainings to and tools to, to combat human trafficking. We have hosted at least one event in each district of Baltimore City, if not multiple. Since COVID, we provide, we started providing virtual learning so we were able to reach more people other than in a local area. We then branched out into a hybrid and, a hybrid of virtual and in-person learning sessions. Additionally, on January 11th of this year, which was National Human Trafficking Day, we had a resource fair and a human trafficking 101. It was very well-attended. We had a lot of our collaborative members come together. We're really proud of the work that we've done. We've created, in partnership with the Victim Services Subcommittee, and I'm sure they'll go into a lot more detail about this, a resource for our community members that's public-facing. I have copies, but it's a brochure that has numerous resources on how to identify things like housing, pro bono legal services, but also the Be More Safe app that Mercy and Debbie Holbrook will talk more about later when they present on the Medical Subcommittee and Blue Dot. So we're really proud of the work that we've done, and we continue to get out into the community and meet people where they are to provide them with the tools that they can use to combat human trafficking.
Thank you, Kim. Next, we'll hear from the Victim Services Committee.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Rachel Sai, and I'm Deputy Director for Turnaround, which is a victim service provider. But I'm also one of the, I'm sorry. I'm also one of the co-chairs for the Victim Services Subcommittee. And also want to have Sherri introduce herself.
Good afternoon. My name is Sherri Jones. I am the Maryland Appointed ICJ Commissioner for the state of Maryland, as well as the Deputy Comp Act Administrator for Juveniles for the state of Maryland, and also the co-chair for the Victim Services Committee.
So the Victim Services Subcommittee, the mission is for us to assess the capacity of Baltimore City to be able to provide assistance to people who have been impacted by human trafficking. A little bit of background. So since 2017, this committee, we have continued to identify gaps in services as well as make recommendations for service improvement and expansion for services for human trafficking in Baltimore City. And so this committee, over time, we've met and co-facilitated presentations with various stakeholders, both governmental and non-governmental, to discuss and address areas of need regarding substance abuse treatment and mental health, for example, education and employment opportunities, and specific needs for labor trafficking survivors, as well as discussing the impact of the COVID pandemic, as an example, in terms of how that played a role in terms of impacting services and service access, as well as addressing the lack of safe and affordable housing in this area. Regarding members of this Subcommittee, we have 30 members strong. And out of the 30 members, approximately about 25 are just regular, routine, active participants on this committee. And the members are comprised of various victim service advocates. We have representation from mental health providers, as well as representation from substance abuse treatment providers, the State's Attorney's Office. We have healthcare providers. Department of Juvenile Services is represented there, as well as survivor leaders and representatives that provide pro bono legal services. Some of the accomplishments that have stemmed out of the Victim Services Subcommittee, you'll hear a lot more from different members who have definitely moved things along. So for example, the Victim Services Subcommittee is where the formation or just some beginning development regarding the Blue Dot program that you're going to hear about first from Mercy Medical Center. So that group was instrumental in the planning and the beginning development of it to have a 24-hour response geared towards the adult survivors of human trafficking in Baltimore City. And so through that committee, that's where we identify gaps in a service to pave the way for that conversation and the development of that service that's offered. As you heard briefly, we were able to host a community resource fair right in the area. So we wanted to do something a little bit different from the traditional resource fairs in terms of people coming in and just getting a brochure or pamphlet about a particular resource. As it relates to human trafficking, we know that time is of essence. And sometimes, taking that next step is important. And so what we did was, one, we wanted to provide resources to address the common risks and vulnerabilities that can come into play regarding human trafficking. We had 30-plus vendors attend. And what they did, they provided on-the-spot intake and actual access right then and there to services that address needs such as employment assistance, mental health, healthcare, and also legal needs, for example, on the spot. We had over 200 walk-ins that came to attend the resource fair that was held at the War Memorial Plaza nearby. And we actually had an actual identification at the resource fair of a person experiencing human trafficking. And that happened because we took the time to develop careful planning in terms of, in the event we needed to, how would we screen on the spot? As you start talking to people and learning about needs of people, some things might show up. And so we were able to actually identify somebody at the resource fair through our careful planning and ways that we were able to do this discreetly. We also took the time to invite service providers that would come in contact or work with survivors of human trafficking. And they were also able to attend the fair and again, get those additional resources that they needed on the spot. Some other accomplishments was the development of the human trafficking content for the Mercy Medical's Be More Safe app. Again, something that you'll hear more about. But that was specifically to help the community learn more about human trafficking, as well as provide resources for professionals that would access that site. We also developed a human trafficking services survey. And this was an anonymous survey developed with the support of a researcher that would be given to people with lived experience of going through human trafficking to take the time to get their feedback about service improvement, as well as any ways that we could help to improve service access. And then I believe you'll also hear about the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Resource Guide, which developed pamphlets for the community at large, and then also a live electronic resource guide that would be accessible to professionals.
I would like to add that in the development of the content for the Mercy Medical Center Be More Safe app, we actually consulted with a person in the community that provided training for hospital personnel. And she had no knowledge of human trafficking. And so she was able to help us understand what someone who knew nothing about human trafficking would need in that information.
So lastly, some of the things that we're continuing to do or what's coming next, we're continuing to have conversations to expand services for the underserved and marginalized populations, such as males and transgender. You know, we need to make sure that there are specific groups who need assistance and who need services can actually get the services they need, you know, clearly in this area. And then we want to also address barriers that clearly have been identified regarding safe and affordable housing in the area. And then, in general, just improving services in Baltimore City. We're going to use the feedback that was given by the survivors and people with lived experience from the survey results and actually move it forward. It's important for their voices to not only be obtained, but also to be listened to, respected. And actually, you know, we need to implement what they said. And I think Sherri wanted to say something more.
Yes, I wanted to elaborate. So during, over the past, last spring, we actually did a joint effort with the Public Awareness Committee to bring awareness to male sexual trafficking. And so what we're going to be doing is continuing that effort to bring awareness so that way, we can make sure that providers are providing safe spaces for those individuals. Because what we found was, in the research, is that most of the programs that service that population are geared towards the LGBT community and heterosexual males who are not feel comfortable receiving those services. So that's one of the things we want to make sure that we do, provide a safe space for all males and transgender population.
Thank you. Next up, we'll hear from the Medical Committee.
Hi, my name is Debbie Holbrook. I direct forensic nursing at Mercy Medical Center. We're the designated center for forensic nursing services for the entire city. Colleen and I, Lieutenant Colleen Lull from the Baltimore City Fire Department, and I co-chair the Medical Subcommittee, which is the newest committee that has joined Tom's collaborative. Next slide, please. We are, we have done something pretty amazing. And that is bring together 14 healthcare systems and hospitals within the city to break down silos and work for what's best for patients in our city. And we have over 120 champions now from these hospitals. We have generally 50 that attend regularly to our meetings. And that is 14 healthcare systems. Again, that is a lot. What we do, Colleen and I, work with all of these hospitals and champions to create protocols, to create algorithms, which you're going to see when we talk about Blue Dot, to explain, here's how medical care providers and EMS work, docs, nurses, and EMS. What's it look like and what do we do? And otherwise, people aren't generally going to screen as well if there's not a plan. And we've created that plan for all of these hospitals. We do lunch and learns. We do take care of education at their staff meetings. We met with them all the way through COVID. We had no lull during COVID at a time when we were seeing the highest level of victims come in and more and more familial trafficking, people putting kids and family members out on the street and trafficking them more than we'd ever seen. Next slide, please. We give hospitals the tools that they need to assure prompt referral into what we've developed as a Blue Dot system. And one of the biggest things that healthcare providers say is, well, they're always coming in with somebody. Well, that person is guarding them. We teach them about these patients having no eye contact with illnesses that I'm going to describe in a minute that are, what we consider in our hospital and EMS systems as frequent flyers. But they're coming in and they're never going to say, "Help me." They're scared to death. They're guarded. Their phones are GPS. So part of this system is silencing their phones. We've given aluminum foil to many of our healthcare providers and EMS systems so they can shut that down so the trafficker doesn't know where they're going, which is so very important. We teach them how to get a patient alone. What do you do when somebody comes in and there's somebody who won't leave them? How do you get them alone? And that's been a great way to help them. Next slide, please. Engage in conversations with these patients. It's not all about sitting in front of a computer and asking screening questions. That doesn't work. We've tried it. And so these are some of the things that we see our patients come in with. A huge amount of strangulation, which is almost never going to leave a mark on their body. With pelvic inflammatory diseases and sexually transmitted diseases, because they can't take off a day to have their period. Think about that. The women in the room, think about what that means. And the measures that they take to stop that bleeding create a great deal of medical problems later. We talk about people with wounds on their bodies in various stages of healing. Next slide, please. And we talk about the actual conversations that you have. And if you're not comfortable having that conversation alone with your patient, then call people who are, and we make sure that that's readily available. Next slide. Our forensic nursing program years ago developed a free app to all Android and iPhones called Be More Safe. And it was about what patients need to know about all the forensic exams that we do. And what we did was work really closely with the Victim Service Committee to develop a page for human trafficking. And no, it's not going to give all the secrets of what we do. You're not going to see PSAs. You're not going to see billboards on this because we don't want this public about where people go. And the beauty about how this all works is it's either in one site or it's mobile. And that is one of the brilliant things we've developed. Next slide, please. And we, the Medical Subcommittee, developed an algorithm for hospitals, for EMS, for the work that Colleen is, Lieutenant Lull is doing brilliantly with the fire department, so that people have it immediately available at their doc stations, at their nurses' stations, in all of the healthcare areas. And this committee gives medical professionals the tools they need to screen and refer people through a central point of intake that I'm going to talk about in a little bit called Blue Dot. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Law Enforcement Committee.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to address the committee today. My name is John Ingram, and I am currently the Human Trafficking Coordinator for the State's Attorney's Office, but I'm also the Law Enforcement Co-Chair. I've been a member of this collaborative and the Law Enforcement Committee since its founding, thanks to Tom. I'm a retired special agent, which is why I've had 31 years of sworn law enforcement and involved in human trafficking fight for a long time. The Law Enforcement Subcommittee is dedicated to supporting all investigative issues involving human trafficking connected to the Baltimore City area. The group currently hosts local, state, and federal investigators, local and federal prosecutors, as well as other supporting agencies likely to identify and protect potential victims of human trafficking. Attendees share experiences, insights, and current trends in the fight against human trafficking. But let's be clear. This group is focused primarily on supporting the efforts of investigators and prosecutors against human trafficking oppressors. These are very difficult cases, and like raising a child, it takes a village. This is a team effort, and protecting victims, both known and unknown, is the pillar of our victim-centered approach. If you only save the known victims, the cycle continues, and the potentially dozens of unknown victims are generally not encountered until they overdose, have a health crisis, or die in the systemic torture and abuse known as human trafficking. We must work together to save the lives of those unknown victims by dismantling these criminal enterprises. In this endeavor, I ask for your continued support of the Law Enforcement Committee. The attending police agencies and investigators of the Law Enforcement Committee are trauma-informed, have in-house victim witness specialists connected to non-governmental organizations for additional services. Police agencies work equally hard in protecting a victim as they do in prosecuting the criminal element responsible. Most people do not realize that these investigators are talented interviewers gifted in building trust through a much softer approach than TV crime shows will ever portray. They understand the separation, services, and safety are the only way to break the cycle and learn the real truths about this modern-day slavery. Keep in mind those three Ss: separation, safety, and services. To break the bronze, we bring together supporting agencies as part of our village. And those our first-encounter people include people like Baltimore Fire and EMS, the Mercy Team, Baltimore School Resource Officers, the Maryland State Board of Massage Therapy Examiners, the Baltimore City Liquor Board, the Baltimore Child Abuse Center, now known as the Center for Hope, and many others. Today, 19 entities and approximately 45 people participate in the Law Enforcement Committee from local to fed level. We meet every 60 days in person, and we've done so for almost a year. And we've led that kind of in-person gathering. My top agenda always consists of the same front part of our meetings where Councilman Burnett, Tom Stack, and others, including federal partners, meet. That occurs every meeting. But then we have a varying mix of three to four topics and speakers relating to current events, case briefings. We have people come in from other task forces and speak. And we regularly try to break it up and bring it a robust agenda, including technology and other ways that people communicate in that world. Our goal is increased communication, partnership, capacities awareness. We want our village to grow with those who can support and dismantle the human trafficking criminal enterprises. In summary, I believe this committee represents the collaborative in a very positive manner. And we are a critical and we are a critical part of this fight. The growth in attendance, along with our robust topics discussed at each meeting has been undeniably popular. The continued agency attendance, even when our agency's primary representative moves on to another position, retires, has a baby, whatever that is, the next person in that agency continues to show up, and not just show up, participate. I believe this implies the collaborative and our law enforcement committee have cemented itself as leaders. We are woven into the fabric of business in the fight against human trafficking. And I yield back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last, from the collaborative, we've got the legislative committee.
Chair of the legislative committee, Chris Burnett, co-chair, Kim Sauer. So I'll keep it short. The legislative subcommittee, similar to the other committees, is made up of members of the collaborative who want to focus on policy both locally and folks, we have representation from the state legislative subcommittee as well because a lot of the issues pertaining to human trafficking are also state issues, statewide issues, and so we try to coordinate with our state partners on that. But out of that committee, it's been sort of a clearinghouse for policy ideas, many of which have come through this committee that you all have seen me put forth on the council. We've done signage legislation in both hospitality hotels, hotel training. We've done sort of the coordinated work at the state level with like State Harbor bills and other policy recommendations that sort of cross-collaborate. And there's also just been sort of a discussion area as these bills come through, which would be in them. And so it's sort of a good space for us to both craft legislation collectively, you know, getting the perspective of folks who are either on the agency side or on the community side before we put it in for council consideration to make sure we're getting things right. So I'll keep it short because most of those bills are coming through this committee so you're all aware of the policy stuff that's coming out of the legislative subcommittee for the collaborative. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We are very familiar with those bills. We get them all. And I think they've all been helpful, or at least thoughtful. Next, we'll move on to our agencies, and we'll start off with the law department. We've got someone from the law department. Can we, actually, we'll come back to the law department once they're able to make it down here. We'll jump to the police department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator for BPD. We stand by our report and have no objection to this bill. Today, I'm joined by Deputy Commissioner Rich Worley, and behind me, I have Major Latonya Bishop from Special Investigations and Lieutenant Latonya Brown, also from Special Investigations. And I'm going to hand it over to Deputy Commissioner Worley to make a few remarks.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Deputy Commissioner Rich Worley. We take this matter very seriously, so much so that during our police reform, obviously, we didn't, in the past, police are usually law enforcement, so we're usually more enforcement mode. We've been changing our perspective towards more victim services over the last several years. We didn't even have a human trafficking unit until April of 2021, where we realized cases were being looked at by different units. So there was not one unit that was coordinating all these different cases. So what we did is we formed a human trafficking unit in April of 2021 with, I believe it was a sergeant, lieutenant, a sergeant, six or eight detectives. We continue to investigate the cases. As of today, we started doing those cases, and we continue to look at them and work with all these other agencies. We participate in the monthly meetings. In November of 2022, we changed out some leadership there. We put in a new sergeant. The sergeant is working diligently to repair any relationships that have been fractured in the past. He's doing a great job, and we look to continue to add and continue to work in collaboration with the other agencies to basically quash this issue of human trafficking.
Thank you. I understand we have the law department in the room.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Sorry, there was no seats downstairs, so I went upstairs. The law department has reviewed the bill for form and legal sufficiency, and we approve it as the appropriate way for the council to address this issue.
Thank you. Next up, we've got the State's Attorney's Office.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity.
Could you use the microphone?
Please use the microphone.
Folks in the broadcast can't hear you otherwise.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council and other members and other participants from the advocacy community. My name's Jesse Halverson. I am, as of three weeks ago, the Division Chief of the Special Victims Unit inside the State's Attorney's Office, returning after a little more than five years away from the office. That's the work that I want to do within the office. The Special Victims Unit handles cases of child sexual abuse, physical abuse of children up to and including homicide, adult sexual assault, and adult domestic violence cases. And then on top of that, over time, they have taken on human trafficking as well as internet crimes against children without any specialized attorneys dedicated to that work. And when we came in in January, we found that actually all units, including the Special Victims Unit, had actually lost attorneys, and there were less attorneys to do this important work. Prior to coming into office, I'd worked with Mr. Bates specifically on the issue of vulnerable populations and my passion for this work, which is why I was chosen to be the Division Chief of the Special Victims Unit. It is a great group of people. We have embedded social workers, investigators, and many attorneys at different levels of experience that are dedicated to this work, which, as everybody in this room knows, takes a toll on the people who do that work. I can tell you that our vision is to really increase the capacity of the office, to have a consistent capacity to respond to human trafficking cases and to bring the fight to the traffickers. Part of that is engaging at the street level in crimes that occur at the street level, and again, recognizing that a lot of the people that used to be seen as criminals are really victims. And so we are really going to pay attention to that and make sure that we redouble the efforts already existing to train everybody in our office to work with our partners and identify those folks as victims. So that's the first part of sort of our four-part process, which is to identify the victims, to incorporate advocates and services for these victims, and then to collaborate on investigations with the law enforcement partners locally and regionally. I attended my first law enforcement subcommittee of the Human Trafficking Collaborative, I guess just last week. And there is clearly a wealth of folks out there collaborating on this, and we want to be part of that. And then proceed with prosecution. That is the metric that we hold ourselves to, which is successfully prosecuting perpetrators. And then beyond that, to ensure that services are provided to victims during the adjudication, and just as important, that they are given a soft handoff and that their services continue after the case is over. In preparing for my role, I sort of read about what successful organizations do, and something that stuck with me is that successful organizations and individuals accept help when it is offered and ask for help when it is needed. And I think that's where we are right now. So we're working to rebuild the office, to increase staff at all levels, and we clearly need more assistant state's attorneys devoted to human trafficking. As a first step, our plan is to cross-train four or five attorneys that are already in the office doing the special victims work where they already really have the skill set to do this work, and other staff members. And for now, we would keep human trafficking within the Special Victims Unit again because it is a good fit. We'll have a real-age human trafficking team that will be able to respond to cases as they are referred, and it will go beyond a single person or one or two people, which really wasn't a tenable or robust response to this problem. But long-term, we really must identify resources to bring in more funding to support assistant state's attorneys who would devote significant time solely to human trafficking cases. We'll certainly use John Ingham, who is a really nationally-recognized specialist in this. I think he's been underutilized in the past, and those days are over. We're lucky to have him, but there's so many other partners that we want to reengage with and to help them be force multipliers for us and let us focus on really what we're best at, which is prosecuting cases. But there's so many things these victim community needs that we really can't supply internally, but there's a lot of other people who can help us, and we look forward to rebuilding those relationships as well. So we're at the beginning. We're very excited to be part of this. I personally am very committed, and I can tell you, Mr. Bates and the deputies under him are very committed to continuing this fight.
Thank you. Before I forget, I wanted to acknowledge Councilwoman Porter's joining the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next up, we've got the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee, for the record. I am Shante Jackson, the Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. We appreciate the time that you all have given to us to discuss the all-too常 often hidden crime of human trafficking and the partnerships with the agencies and the community partners that are with us today. Tom Stack is the best person to talk to you all about the work that we are doing, and so I will be turning it over to him momentarily, but I wanted to share some high-level points with the committee. Baltimore City ranks 14th across the United States with regard to calls into the national human trafficking hotline. Contextually, I need folks to understand that there are over 108,000 cities and towns in the United States and its territories. Baltimore ranks 14th. We take the work of identifying potential victims and prosecuting those perpetrators very seriously. It's in the spirit of partnership that last year, MONC reallocated a portion of its VOKA funding to make sure that EMS team members could receive more training on potential victim identification. Tom is going to share with you all the impact of this training in a minute. In addition, we awarded, since MONC's inception, over $900,000 in community grants to community-based organizations that serve those who are victims of human trafficking and their families. We're currently working on the administration of a community-based training where we go out into neighborhoods and we train folks in how they too can partner in the identification of potential human trafficking victims. And not too long ago, Tom and I had the opportunity to partner with Councilwoman Porter in her district where prostitution is prevalent to start to share with community members how hidden this crime truly is and engage with conversations there. In addition to that, we're actively partnering with the collaborative so that in February, we're able to translate the resource materials that they provide into other languages for members of our community. Finally, I'll say that the work of this collaborative has saved lives here in Baltimore, but I would be remiss if I didn't share with you that they've also saved lives by extension of the network that Tom and others have been able to build through our regional conference that MONC cosponsors in other jurisdictions. At this time, I'll turn it over to Tom.
Thanks, Director Jackson. Appreciate that. Just a couple other things in answer to some of the questions that were posed to us that the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement has a dedicated person, which is myself, in our victim services lane, which is a new lane within the Mayor's Office, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. So some of the things that my position does is provide leadership to the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative, which is my privilege and honor to do, to make sure there's a cooperated and coordinated response to trafficking in the city of Baltimore. We work closely with all of our stakeholders, from law enforcement, prosecutors, city, state agencies, victim service providers, to ensure that human trafficking survivors have access to quality services through a victim-centered and trauma-informed approach. We provide human trafficking awareness training and also law enforcement training as well. We provide training to the Baltimore City Fire Department as well as city school police. We support the BPD with investigations and prosecutions. I serve as a subject matter expert to the mayor on human trafficking, and we work closely with Mercy Medical Center and the Blue Dot Program, which I'm excited to hear about a little bit later. One of the other questions that were posed to us is some of the things we're doing, and Director Jackson talked about, the $300,000 a year that MONC gives out in the human trafficking grant program, which goes to nonprofit agencies, agencies, nonprofit organizations in the city of Baltimore. And what they've done with that $900,000 over the last couple of years is provide direct services to survivors, done public awareness and education. We've provided housing, long-term case management, and a whole array of other services. So just some of the trends and what we track, I confer with the Baltimore City Police Department as well as the other agencies, law enforcement agencies, to look at the trends that are going on in the city. And I also utilize the internet. I periodically go on internet websites that do reviews of sex workers in the city to see where there are hotspots in the city. As far as the dashboard goes, the initial version of the MONC Public Safety Accountability Dashboard will not have a human trafficking component, but MONC is exploring the possibilities of having it down the road in future iterations of the dashboard. But what, some of the data that we do collect at MONC is how many human trafficking awareness events we've done, how many people we've trained, how many law enforcement officers we train, not only in the city of Baltimore, but also in the state of Maryland. And then also, the BPD provides us with numbers of investigations and how many people they've actually served. So MONC is going to continue our work. We don't plan on, there's a lot, we've got a long way to go. We're just, we're at the tip of the iceberg, and there's a long way to go. And MONC will continue to be a leader in this field. And, you know, we planned on continuing our grant program as well as being proactive to stop human trafficking in the city of Baltimore.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Baltimore City Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Chairman Conway, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. For the record, my name is James Matts. I'm the Deputy Chief of EMS. The Fire Department stands by our report. We're very active in this worthy arena of human trafficking. Some of the efforts that have gone on with our partners noted here, if I'm not mistaken, have been able to outreach to over 55 people since the inception of the program. And we stand by to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation?
Yeah.
Oh, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Councilmen, members of the City Council. My name is Lieutenant Colleen Lull. I serve in the EMS Training Division for my primary role, and I have been partnering with Tom back since 2018 when he came to the Fire Department, came to the then-chief, and asked if we would be a part of this to figure out a way that we could share human trafficking with our members and figure out a way that we could contribute to the overall effort. And so obviously, we jumped on that, and we started that within my area, within the ALS Coordinator Program. And without an official title, basically, I coordinate all the anti-trafficking education and response for the City Fire Department. We have a unique role and an opportunity to recognize and respond to human trafficking, not only on EMS and fire responses, but also in our work within our Office of the Fire Marshal, our general awareness of activity in our communities because we pretty much live and work, we have a 24/7 presence in all of our communities here in the city, and even our dispatchers. We see things that others do not. We respond where, when, and where others do not. And if educated and encouraged to respond, our members can be the link between someone involved in human trafficking and the services vital to their survival. We can, as Tom often says, "We can save lives in ways that we never thought possible." And because of that, we have trained all of our frontline responders, because of that, we have trained all of our frontline responders, both EMS and suppression, which is obviously all the folks who ride on our fire engine and the fire trucks. Um, so next slide, please. Um, your next slide? Okay, there we go, sorry. Um, why we do this is because if you look at the research and literature out there, they tell us that 88% of people trafficked at some point in time accessed healthcare while they were being trafficked. However, virtually none of them were recognized and they're, because they were not recognized, they were never offered information and resources, any kind of linkage to their survival. Um, as Dev referenced earlier, we are a part and within our role of EMS as, um, part of the healthcare continuum and data shows that we have this unique opportunity, not, again, not only on our responses, but by our fire investigators and responses, so whether that be after a fire, whether we're working with the Liquor Control Board or on various task forces to do inspections and responses to complaints. Um, we have general community awareness after, it's inevitable, every time we provide training, someone comes up to me and we work, um, with, um, John over in the State's Attorney's Office to respond to things that our people now recognize that in the past they would have looked, um, right past. Um, there's one more on there, I know. Um, and then again, our dispatchers, we want to train our dispatchers to know when someone is calling in and they're saying something that there, there's something hidden that maybe they're not able to speak freely or to do those kind of things and they also need to understand the overall city response model. Um, next slide. So, um, what we have done is reached out and trained all of our providers. Um, Tom started back in the fall of 18 and I was, uh, just sat there and listened and Tom provided training for weeks on end, um, to all of our paramedics. And when I say ALS clinicians, that's our paramedics predominantly, some on ambulances and some on suppression. Um, and we did an initial recognition of what human trafficking is, the definition and then what it literally looks like and how do, how does it appear on a response? And then we came back for them, we do a two-year training cycle, so we fit it right into our regular pre-existing training. And, um, then the second round, we actually met with survivors and we wanted to ensure that we had a trauma-informed victim center response and so we incorporated topics on language and how do we speak and how, what, how do we encourage folks to give us, be comfortable with us and to know that we're allies? Um, and so we did another level and that was when we also incorporated the Blue Dot Response Model because that had been released by that point in time. And so now all of our providers are trained in that. We also have incorporated this training into our, all of our new recruits, all of our sworn members get this training when they're at, before they graduate from the Fire Academy. So I provide that training now. And, um, because of that VOKA grant funding that Director Jackson talked about, we were able to then reach the other, um, we offered it to a lot more, but, um, our firefighters who are on the fire engines and fire trucks, a lot of them are basic levels, um, supply, BLS providers, EMTs, and so we did that this summer where we talked to them and we tailored that to say, maybe you're not on an ambulance, but how could folks on our fire engines and fire trucks support the work that EMS does? How do you recognize it? And again, inevitably, every time we do this training, somebody said, I had that and I had no idea what we saw. So now going forward, um, we get calls all the time from the suppression folks and they're doing fantastic work, getting folks into Deb's shop, um, and getting them into the Blue Dot Program. Again, we have trained the dispatchers, we did, I did them initially a long time ago, um, to just do a basic awareness of what the Blue Dot policy was so that they knew when our folks were saying we have a Blue Dot patient, what that meant. And then also our dispatchers, um, we did a, we just did a follow-up one where we really integrated the work that we're doing, how it's presenting so they could hear it. Finally, um, to completely flip the script, we changed the perspective from identifying potential patients to exposing young adults, our teenagers, who we have contact with through a variety of camps, our Camp Spark, which is a recruitment effort for, um, women to come into the fire service and also our All Hazards Camp I did before COVID, um, where we talk to teens about how they could recognize trafficking and not get drawn into it. So from a community, um, education effort, we supported that. And so throughout all of that, um, we have trained over 1,500 people in the signs and, um, of human trafficking and to varying levels of technicality based on their position. Next slide, please. So what have we done department-wide, um, to implement processes to support the overall collaborative and effort? First and foremost, we follow the city's response model, the Blue Dot model, where we know where we can take people, but we make sure that that dovetails appropriately with our state EMS protocols so that we don't override the, the guidance and policies that give us our license to practice medicine. So we make sure that the patients are taken care of and then when we can and how we can, we get them into medical care. But sometimes we also know and Rachel and, and Sheri and the other folks can tell us that they're not ready. There's a lot of reasons why they might not be ready to transport and that's the time we are here to plant the seeds of resources and to show them that we are allies and that there are resources, if they don't want to go through the Fire Department, we share oppo, um, opportunities for them to get, uh, help when and how they want it. Again, we emphasize the importance of trauma-informed care. And then policy and procedurally-wise, we developed a operations memo in 2020 that talked about the Blue Dot Program and how to access it for our providers. I am currently working with a deputy chief to develop an official policy to shift us from just an operations memo to a formal policy within our department. We make sure we talk to our providers about mandatory reporting for those victims who are under 18, um, and how that fits in. And then the bigger thing that we do that no one else in the state has done is that we have, uh, Chief Matts has, I worked with Chief Matts to get a supplemental question within our electronic patient care reports to literally ask, do you suspect human trafficking? Every single patient care report that our crews do, they have to answer that question. And the reason that is important is that went into effect in December of 2020 and prior to that, that question being there, it, it was only, I would only learn about trafficking through a complaint, a verbal notification, um, something to that where there's personal contact or if I was literally reading every single patient care report, which is not feasible for our department. Um, but now we have it as a data field and our Quality Assurance Office, um, runs that report every morning. We look for the yeses, we look for them to make sure it's not a clerical error and every time there's a yes that is potentially valid, I review it. And then I share it with our partners to make sure that that patient was linked with services and when we find cases within our medical subcommittee where there were gaps, we follow up as within the medical subcommittee. We just had one with a major hospital system in the city and we addressed their, um, why the decisions were made to handle a case in a certain way and we did some education and we provided some follow-up. So now that that system is moving in a better direction and because of this system and the, and just that question, um, they're in a better place now to respond to trafficking. Next slide. Um, for our, um, public awareness and education piece, again, I talked about the Camp, All Hazards Camp and Camp Spark, we do that. We attended the event, um, sponsored by the Public Awareness Committee, right? It was a, like, a couple of weeks ago. Um, and then I attend training conferences and present at a variety of conferences, whether that be the, um, Maryland Human Trafficking, um, Professional Seminar, um, that Tom works with and a lot of the folks here in this room attend. Um, and also the law enforcement one, you would be surprised at the partnerships that we can have with law enforcement. We learn how we overlap, but also sometimes when we're not speaking the same language, how we can dovetail and sometimes when we don't identify the same things in the same way, it doesn't mean that we're, either one of us are wrong. We have different criteria and different needs and we have different opportunities to work together and maybe we work with John to learn how we can tailor our training so that we can work better to support other efforts. But our primary response in the Fire Department is always patient-centered and getting people the results that they need, the help that they need. Um, most notably recently, I provided training to the entire BWI Fire and Rescue Department, um, they, after a call that they had for trafficking based on a professional, um, uh, partnership that I have with some folks and it resulted now in BWI supporting Blue Dot, but also our surrounding jurisdictions. So we are developing a seamless regional response to support trafficking, so not only from the medical arena. Um, and we see that from the Fire Departments and, um, we're working on that. And finally, um, we also provide them with, um, I've worked with Montgomery County and Hartford County to help them, um, work to get us, uh, the kind of collaborative that we have here because it's obviously an amazing model and so we work with them, um, to do that and hopefully they can do that in their, in their work. So finally, the impact that we have, our last slide here, is that, uh, again, the total number of trainings you see, ALS members, we did 500 folks, um, suppression, dispatchers, recruits and campers. And the end result is that prior to any of these efforts by Tom and otherwise, we had zero documented cases of potential trafficking. Since February of 2020, we have had 55 cases. The most notable is that this week we had one on January 28th, just this week. Um, we ebb and flow with our numbers, um, but that's just the reality of how the work is. And so what we find is that there's an increased, um, detection and every time we do training and put some effort to this and make it a priority in our department, um, are, I am impressed with our folks with the volume of calls that they choose. They could easily choose not to see this, not to the report this, but they're not. They're doing amazing work and I just do the education, but the folks on the street in our department are doing the amazing work. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. That was really, really helpful. Uh, next up, we have the Office of Civil Rights.
Good afternoon. Um, my name is Arisali Stafford, Wage Supervisor, uh, and I'm here representing the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. The agency is committed to protecting the rights and well-being of all the residents, including those affected by human trafficking, by leverage our wage enforcement work to identify victims of human trafficking and have implemented several initiatives to raise awareness and support survivors. One of the ways we work to identify victims of human trafficking is through our wage enforcement efforts. During wage enforcement investigations, we look for signs of exploitation and refer individuals who might have a victim of human trafficking to appropriate services and resources. In 2021, we launched a citywide awareness campaign to raise awareness about human trafficking in Baltimore. The campaign aimed to educate residents about the signs of human trafficking and encourage them to report suspected cases to appropriate authorities. The campaign included various votes in English and Spanish and 18 billboards across, uh, Baltimore City. We are proud to serve also on the Baltimore Human Trafficking Collaborative, a group of organizations and agencies working to get, together to combat human trafficking within the city. Also during Civil Rights Week, we held an awareness event day to educate the community about the impacts of human trafficking. The event was very well-attended and provided valuable information to all attendees. Human trafficking is a serious issue affecting our community and requires a coordinated response from all the government, law enforcement and community-based organizations. We are committed to continue our efforts to identify human trafficking through the forms of outreach and education and we look forward to continue work with all our partners here in Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we've got the Baltimore City Ombudsman.
Hi, good afternoon, Chairman Conway and members of the committee. Thank you for bringing us all here today to discuss this very important topic. My name is Julia Roche and I am the Legislative Affairs Director for the Baltimore City Health Department. Today, I am accompanied by three of my colleagues. Mary Ann Brennan, our Long-Term Care Ombudsman, she is going to be the person who will primarily be answering your questions today. Um, she is going to talk a little bit about benefits trafficking. Um, we also are joined by, um, Assistant Commissioner for Advocacy Services in our Division of Aging and Care Services, Jim McGill, and our Deputy Commissioner of that Division, Hyung Tan, and she is joining virtually. So, Mary Ann Brennan, if you would just like to come, uh, give a very brief overview of what you do. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Brennan. I'm the Program Manager for the Baltimore City's Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program. So, that's a long title, but I'm the advocate of people, I manage a program that advocates for people in nursing homes and assisted livings. And I think maybe some people in the room, I think, why am I here? I didn't think I would be here. Um, I advocate for people who need care, but through our work, we have experienced, first of all, there are 28, um, nursing homes in Baltimore City and there are over 500 assisted livings in Baltimore City. Um, and then there are probably just that many unlicensed assisted livings. I see people from the Fire Department and they know well what I'm speaking about. So in our work as advocates for people who live in assisted livings, we have witnessed residents being trafficked for their benefits. And, um, yeah, I'm not well-versed in the subject matter of trafficking, but I can tell you what we see is people lose their autonomy, lose their access to their funds when they moved into some of these facilities because the facilities take over their income. And through, once they, the owner of that facility becomes, not to go in the weeds here, the rep payee of the resident's income, the resident no longer has access to their money. And the owner of that facility can move them from one place to the other, which they do. There are a lot of good providers out there that don't do that, but there are a lot of ones that do do that. And, you know, through our work, we see that the residents then, you know, are at the will of, uh, these providers. And, um, so as I said, I didn't think I'd come in and talk about this today, but these people are being, you know, trafficked, because I know one of the key words in trafficking is isolation and loss of autonomy and then sadly, loss of will. So in our statement that we presented, we asked for an inter-agency response to this and I know there are other agencies that want this to start addressing this. We have come to these facilities, we don't know what to do, we don't know where their money is, we don't know, and, and the other thing I want to add to this is many of these people are not from Baltimore City. In fact, I'd say most of them aren't. They're from a hospital in Howard County, uh, it's a cascading effect, they can't, I'm saying that as an example, not pinpointing any hospital. Um, and they no longer have, they can't afford to live where they live and there's some assisted living licensed or unlicensed in Baltimore City that will take them on the condition that they become their representative payee. And then they're moved within different facilities and family and friends can no longer find them. I had a phone call yesterday from someone who couldn't find their, their loved one and he had moved from a hospital to a licensed assisted living, to an unlicensed assisted living and it's been over a year and they can't find him. So anyhow, um, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Didn't, I didn't know that was an issue. Um, next up, we've got Baltimore City Schools and School Police.
Uh, good afternoon, Chairman, members of the committee. I am John, my name is John Davis. I'm the Chief of Schools. I'm joined by Major Norman Coleman from our School Police and also Melissa Broome. Uh, I'm going to talk about three aspects, uh, in Baltimore City Public Schools regarding this important topic. Um, the first one is really around an appreciation for the task force, an appreciation for the collaborative. Being a part of that and, and making sure that we attend and are a part of it is important because even just recently, as we were re-engaging a young person at our central office headquarters, um, there were signs of human trafficking and suspicions. Uh, being a part of the collaborative allowed us to quickly refer the case and to make sure that there was an investigation that could begin. Um, and so I just want to appreciate the collaborative and really bring in light to this as much as possible. The second aspect I would, um, point out is really the training that occurs. Uh, Mr. Stack mentioned how he has trained our school police officers. Um, they're always, uh, some of the first people to hear of specific situations, but sometimes even before then, our social workers hear of situations or have suspicions. They've also been trained, um, most recently at the beginning of the year, at the beginning of the year, we usually have a few days of just sole training for our educators. Um, and we had CPS come in and make sure that our social workers were trained on signs and what to do in cases that there was a suspicion. And again, I think sometimes folks don't really know this, but in Baltimore City Public Schools, we have a social worker in every single school. So we make sure that every school has got some training in that aspect. Um, I think the third part, or excuse me, the, the other part of the training I would want to point out is with our health teachers. Um, it is embedded in our health curriculum and I'll talk about that in just a second, but our health teachers have also been trained on signs because they have, um, the obligation through the health curriculum, which we start in kindergarten all the way through 12th grade, of, of really developing certain aspects of this. And you can imagine the, the objectives and the way that it is taught is a little bit different in kindergarten than say it is in the 10th grade. Um, but in kindergarten, there are objectives around demonstrating refusal skills and other ways to take action if someone is making you feel uncomfortable as a small child. Um, and then those types of objectives are spiraled in our curriculum, which is again the third aspect that I would bring up, to the point that when you get into high school, right, it is named human trafficking. We talk about grooming, harassment, um, exploitation and making sure that, again, as a child progresses through our health curriculum, there are opportunities to discuss this, opportunities to discuss what you do in cases of mistreatment. to discuss what you do in cases of mistreatment, so that it is a direct part of our health curriculum. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Center for Hope.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the City Council. Thank you for including us in today's hearing on Baltimore City's response to human trafficking. I'm Adam Rosenberg. I'm the Vice President for Violence Intervention and Prevention at LifeBridge Health and the Executive Director of Center for Hope. Center for Hope, many of you may know as formerly the Baltimore Child Abuse Center, is LifeBridge Health's model response to recognize that all forms of interpersonal and inter-community violence are related, and they benefit from the support and partnership of a community-based health system. We care bravely at our program, and we firmly believe that a comprehensive and collaborative approach to violence across the entire lifespan, from childhood through and including elder abuse and for all communities, is the way to be able to address and end violence in our city there and across the nation. It's our goal to improve the future successful outcomes of our neighborhoods, our clients, and our children. With me today, I just want to point out, is Dr. Carrie Hannon, who is our longtime Director of Forensic Services and has led our team review for well over twenty years. She's the Director of Forensic Services at Center for Hope. And I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce Manny, who's our Facility Dog, who's also present here today, a highly-trained team member from Canine Companions, who meets with not only survivors of various forms of violence, but also provides support for caregivers as well when they arrive at the center. Center for Hope has, as one of its several components, Baltimore's nationally-accredited Children's Advocacy Center, which was known as Baltimore Child Abuse Center. It was established in nineteen eighty-seven, and it was the first of its kind in Maryland, and it's the third oldest in the nation. Its goal then and still now is to be able to provide a collaborative response when, an example, an issue of child abuse or sexual abuse comes up. And rather than a child, a survivor of violence, having to meet separately with frankly everybody who's testifying today, we provide that one coordinated response to have a coordinated collaborative interview and multidisciplinary team review to create efficiencies and reduce trauma to the child there. I've been working with the center in some form or fashion for over twenty years now, which was Baltimore Child Abuse Center. Even those of you who've been in the field a very long time would even know it as the Child Advocacy Network, and now we're Center for Hope. I've had the great privilege of working with many people actually on this panel here and many dedicated members of law enforcement, healthcare, social services, prosecution, and we've helped tens of thousands of children. Just last month, our team worked closely with the Department of Homeland Security and other partners in a very complex case that involved forensic interviews and medical examinations of multiple children and a long day of navigation that resulted in the discovery of human trafficking, and Manny was there on hand to support as well. A large part of the center's role over these many years has been to convene and host our multidisciplinary team conversations. These are regular meetings that we hold at Center for Hope, either on-person or in-person or online. We're all partners involved in an investigation of alleged abuse, which includes many of the members here today, the Baltimore City Police Department, the Department of Social Services, the Special Victims Unit at the State's Attorney's Office, our team along with medical and mental health professionals. We review cases, protocols, and next steps in an effort to ensure best practices and that we reduce trauma by placing the child at the center of these efforts there. As a side note, the Child Advocacy Center is just one part of Center for Hope now. It is more than a CAC. We have two domestic violence programs based in hospitals, two hospital violence response teams, six Safe Street sites, and an elder justice program as well. This twenty-year collaboration that we've done with multidisciplinary teams has essentially led to the creation of the separate Child Trafficking Multidisciplinary Team and ultimately our work as Baltimore's Regional Trafficking Navigator. This coming together of the Child Advocacy Center model, our team of experts, and our new facility on the campus of Sinai Hospital, which I really do encourage you all to come visit, brings each instance of child trafficking a positive and powerful response from all of our partners and on the benefit of, most importantly, the children affected by trafficking. Also located on-site, once it's built out, will be co-located detectives from Baltimore City Police, the Child Abuse Unit, as well as the Human Trafficking Unit and the Internet Crimes Unit there, providing that coordinated onsite approach. Again, it's that one-stop shop and making this as easy as possible for survivors of violence as well as our partners. In 2010, the center began to formally respond to child trafficking in Baltimore City and the surrounding region by providing forensic interviews for child survivors of sex trafficking in partnership with local and federal law enforcement. In December seventeen, the center implemented the first Child Trafficking Multidisciplinary Team in Maryland using the framework of the nationally-accepted child sexual abuse multidisciplinary team model that has been promoted by the Department of Justice and the National Children's Alliance. Our affiliation with National Children's Alliance also gives us a memorandum of understanding with the FBI when it relates to federal investigations of child exploitation and child trafficking. In 2019, Governor Hogan signed the Child Sex Trafficking Screening and Services Act, which created the Regional Navigator Program. And in November 2020, we were awarded the grant through the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Youth, and Victim Services to provide these services for Baltimore City. My colleague Amanda Rodriguez has the same grant for Baltimore County Services, and we are one of several navigators in Maryland as we work to provide coverage for the entire state over the next several years through these navigator programs. Our regional navigator and our CAC manager, Maryam Imohi, was originally available for the original hearing date, and unfortunately was unable to join us today due to a previously scheduled leave of absence. But her role in this is really critical, and once trafficking has been identified or referred by one of our partners, her position's been critical in helping the team conduct screening assessments using a variety of tools, connecting youth with safety planning, basic living needs, access to trauma counseling, case management, forensic interview if necessary, medical and mental health services there. We all play a role in this multifaceted approach there, and our role in this is to be able to convene that multidisciplinary team, to be able to run the forensic interview, to provide the best possible recorded version of what had happened or didn't happen to a suspected victim of violence, or in this case, trafficking there. It's one of the things that we frankly are most proud of that we've done at Center for Hope, Baltimore Child Abuse Center, over these years, and we've trained thousands of people as to how to conduct a forensic interview there. We've extended that interview as well to be able to use that same process and format for elder abuse, for victims of trafficking, for witnesses to violence as well. Since early 2021, we've held fifty-two Child Trafficking Multidisciplinary Team Reviews. Team members regularly attend scheduled meetings when a case of trafficking presents, either online or in-person. We've conducted eighty-five specific forensic interviews for primary trafficking allegations, and we've provided over two-hundred-and-eighty different services on behalf of those youth who have been in need there. This Child Trafficking Multidisciplinary Team is scheduled to meet twice weekly immediately following the broader Child Advocacy MDT that many of these same partners attend there. So, we tack it on to the end of the meeting, and if there is a case of trafficking that needs to be discussed, then the team goes right into the trafficking MDT there. The navigator attends all of the Child Advocacy Center multidisciplinary team meetings and screens for possible human trafficking cases, which has happened a number of times. It's through the close in-house working relationship of these teams that we're able to refer survivors of trafficking and those at risk of trafficking to free grant-funded trauma-focused behavioral health treatment by our in-house mental health team training these areas, or many of the partners present in the room today. In addition to providing navigation services, our regional navigator provides training for professionals, like many of us in the room here, for local, state, national, and even international agencies looking to understand how to collaboratively respond to child trafficking there. We're really proud of the fact that we're part of that collaborative to provide that information out there. And collaboration really is the heart of what we do. It's what we've been together in this field for well over twenty years in various forms, working together to make sure that the survivor of violence, the survivor of trauma is put center there, and we all work around that to make sure that everyone's needs are met and that in the end, that survivor of violence gets the help that they need there. It's, and we're really proud of being able to do that and to extend this as a natural part of this, to help end child trafficking. And on behalf of Center for Hope and our Regional Trafficking Navigator Team, I thank everybody for their time.
Thank you, Adam. Next up, we have the Baltimore City Department of Social Services.
Good afternoon, Chairman Conway and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today to speak about the services that the Baltimore City Department of Social Services provides regarding human trafficking. My name is Stephanie Cook, and I'm an Assistant Deputy Director for Child and Family Services for the department. I'm also the department's new representative on the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative. I appreciate the interest that you and your colleagues have expressed in reviewing this important issue. Hundreds of women and men at the Department of Social Services go to work every day to make Baltimore City a place where family, excuse me, where people independently support themselves and their families, and where individuals are safe from abuse and neglect. We believe there is no more important job in state government. We never hesitate to take action when we believe the well-being and safety of the vulnerable children, teens, and adults we serve is being compromised. Since 2012, Baltimore City DSS and all local Departments of Social Services of Maryland have operated under a state policy for responding to and caring for victims of human trafficking. Our policy guides CPS on how to engage, assess, and coordinate service delivery to victims of sex trafficking. I'd like to acknowledge the important role staff from Turnaround played in helping the department formulate this policy so that we are responding appropriately to referrals received from victim service providers. In 2017, federal guidance changed to make it easier for child safety workers to initiate a human trafficking investigation by removing the requirement that an alleged maltreter be in a caregiver capacity. This allowed the department to respond to reports of children trafficking themselves. A third major development came in 2019 with the creation of the Regional Navigator Program to enhance local collaboration around identifying and providing services to victims of human trafficking. Under this new process, law enforcement and local Departments of Social Services who suspect a child is a victim of sex trafficking can notify a regional navigator in their jurisdiction or region to obtain needed services for the child. The Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Youth, and Victim Services manages that application process, funding and oversight of the Regional Navigator Program. That office awarded funding to implement a Regional Navigator Program in 2020, and as Adam said, that Regional Navigator is housed at the Center for Hope. Due to the potentially unstable living situations, physical distance from friends and family, traumatic experiences, and emotional vulnerability, children involved with child welfare are at risk for being targeted by traffickers who are actively seeking children to exploit. Research shows that the majority of children become engaged in commercial sex activities several years before their first encounter with law enforcement or CPS. Whenever we have reason to suspect a youth is involved in human trafficking, we immediately refer the matter to law enforcement for potential criminal investigation, and we notify the Center for Hope to schedule a forensic interview. In accordance with state law, this referral process has been codified in a memorandum of understanding with the Baltimore City Department of Social Services, the Baltimore Police Department, the State's Attorney's Office, and the Center for Hope. This allows our agencies to share confidential information and better serve victims. Because of the close connection between sex trafficking and the child welfare system, all BCDSS and child welfare casework staff are provided with sex trafficking training created by the University of Maryland School of Social Work to aid staff in identifying, engaging, assessing, and providing services to sex trafficking victims. All casework staff receive pre-service and in-service training. Anytime our staff are suspicious of a youth being trafficked, they complete a standardized assessment tool to assess for the likelihood of the youth being sex trafficked or at risk of being trafficked. Additionally, BCDSS leadership also created a CPS unit made up of staff assigned specifically to investigate reports of sexual abuse and sex trafficking. Our staff also take part in twice-a-week child welfare multidisciplinary team meetings, which helps facilitate a coordinated response to allegations of child trafficking. Furthermore, additional trafficking MDTs are held when supplemental partner's input is needed. The Baltimore City Department of Social Services values our partnerships around the assessment, investigation, prosecution, and provision of services for those impacted by human trafficking. Thank you for this opportunity to appear, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you. We're getting through this, guys, I promise. All right. Next, we've got the Baltimore City Department of Juvenile Services.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Angela Branch. I'm the Assistant Regional Director in Baltimore City. The department is an agency that utilizes screening tools to identify and support juvenile victims of human trafficking. In 2012, DJAS, in partnership with Turnaround, developed an MOU to solidify the partnership that commits screening for human trafficking victims. DJAS also provides training to all employees that teaches them to appropriately screen, identify, and provide support to juvenile victims of human trafficking. The curriculum was developed with input from DJAS, the Maryland Human Trafficking Task Force, and various service providers. Survivors of human trafficking are recognized by DJAS as victims of crime and are viewed and treated with dignity and respect and sensitivity. In an effort to address victimization, DJAS has implemented the Domestic Minor Human Sex Trafficking Initiative. The initiative was established to create a procedure for screening youth that are positive, that are possible victims of human trafficking. This is achieved by all youth that are admitted to DJAS detention facilities or children that appear for intake conference or under the supervision of DJAS, and there is a reason to believe the child may be involved as a victim of human trafficking, shall be screened using the Tier One or Tier One-B screening tool. If the screening tool indicates that a particular youth may be a victim of human trafficking, the youth shall be referred to the service provider for further screening, assessment, and referral to services. Once this is completed and sent to the service provider, a Tier Two screening is completed by the service provider, and if confirmed that the youth is a victim, an alert will be opened in the agency database and follow-up with service providers to ensure the youth is receiving anti-trafficking treatment service, specific services. In terms of accomplishments, staff's knowledge and awareness have increased within the guidelines of DJAS policy and procedure. Our agency staffs are well-equipped to ensure that referrals are sent to appropriate service providers to meet the need of each youth. In addition, our in-service training, the agency is constantly seeking training and conferences around the country to increase the knowledge and awareness of our staff for up-to-date trend in human trafficking and ensure that we have access to the most up-to-date training. We also have members that are, we also have staff that are active members of the Human Trafficking Task Force. In addition, we collaborate with the Child Trafficking Multidisciplinary Traffic Team, and we also receive support from local and state agencies to help support our victims. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Chairman Conway and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Kevin Hayes. I'm the Chief of Staff for the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office. Currently, the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office is committed to protecting the rights and well-being of all Baltimore City residents. As of right now, during our annual in-service, we conduct human trafficking awareness training. During that training, our deputies are given information on how to spot human trafficking when they're conducting evictions or when they're serving domestic violence warrants. Once that information is received and there's a suspicion of human trafficking, we pass that information on to our Intelligence Section, and they pass that on to our local, state, and federal partners. The current sheriff wants to be a more proactive partner in the fight against human trafficking and would love to work closer with all of our partners here. If we have not in the past, that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate you. Next, we're going to hear from some federal law enforcement with the Department of Homeland Security.
You can use the one behind you if you want. You can use the one behind you or if you'd like to go to the podium, up to you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just like to thank Baltimore City Council for inviting Homeland Security Investigations to be here today to participate. My name is Evan Campanella. I'm an Assistant Special Agent in Charge with HSI Baltimore, and I oversee the human trafficking portfolio. Speaking broadly, Homeland Security Investigations is the primary investigative arm of the Department of Homeland Security, and DHS places an incredible amount of emphasis on investigations related to human exploitation. HSI has been at the forefront of combating human trafficking since DHS was created in 2003, focusing not only on the investigative approach, but also on outreach, training, and educating all populations that and educating all populations that could potentially see and report human trafficking. Some of the recent outreaches conducted by HSI Baltimore include presentations during the Baltimore City Civil Rights Week and at the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative Public Awareness Event on National Human Trafficking Awareness Day. Our agents also work extensively with the DHS Blue Campaign and the HSI-led Center for Countering Human Trafficking down in Washington, DC. Our personnel that investigate human trafficking are assigned to the Human Exploitation Group. They're comprised of six special agents, one criminal analyst, a victim assistance specialist, and six task force officers that are trauma-informed and trained in a victim-centered approach when encountering and providing assistance to trafficked victims. Our investigators prioritize the stabilization of victims through connections with government agencies, non-government organizations, and healthcare providers throughout Maryland, such as the Blue Dot Initiative, the Safe Center, the Center for Hope, and Turnaround, to name a few. I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the Mercy Blue Dot Initiative, um, who HSI submitted for a presidential award for their efforts to combat human trafficking. The award winners will be announced later in February. However, regardless of the outcome, there's no denying the efforts that they are taking to combat human trafficking are some of the most forward-thinking in the healthcare field. Additionally, we work steadfastly with our state and local and federal partners, as well as Baltimore City Police Department, um, the Baltimore City Department of Social Services, when conducting investigations into human trafficking that affect anything in Baltimore City. If the council would like, I could highlight a few case examples, talk about our stats, and how, um, leads are received. So one of the cases I'd like to talk about is the U.S. versus Ryan Odell Oliver. Baltimore City Police Department arrested Mr. Oliver on local arrest warrant and charged him with various sex crimes, including first-degree rape, kidnapping, and assault after he was found to be trafficking three adult women victims. After pleading guilty in the state level, we worked with our Baltimore City partners, and we presented the case to the federal prosecutor. Um, it was accepted, and Oliver was tried, and he received 15 years in federal incarceration for sex trafficking by fraud, force, or coercion, interstate transportation for prostitution, enticement to travel for interstate purposes of prostitution, and possession of ammunition by a felon. Another example of HSI's work in Baltimore City is the arrest of DeAngelo Johnson, a sex trafficker operating in and around Baltimore City, and one of his more prolific customers, Charles Nabbitt, a wealthy Baltimore City businessman. Nabbitt was charged federally and accepted a plea to offenses related to purchasing sex in exchange for money. We highlight that case because that's one of the few cases that was prosecuted federally that involved a jihon. One of the last cases that I'll highlight is the partnership between HSI and Baltimore City, is the arrest, the indictment, and sentencing of Kyle David Robinson. After receiving information that Robinson was selling two minor females for sex, HSI utilized undercover resources to set up a date with Robinson. When we did that, we uncovered the egregious fact that he had just recruited, recruited two minors in Baltimore City outside of their foster homes or temporary housing to perform these sex acts for money at his direction. So HSI and Baltimore City arrested Robinson immediately upon interacting with him, presented the case for federal prosecution, where he was ultimately sentenced to 10 years incarceration in July of 2022. Working together, the investigators were able to stop Robinson only weeks into beginning his sexual exploitation of these females. So our Human Exploitation Group routinely initiates between 15 and 20 human trafficking investigations a year that are accepted for federal prosecution. That doesn't mean that they're not working on other things, but those are the ones that get accepted for prosecution on the federal level. Our agents also routinely assist our state and local counterparts on tips and leads through our use of intelligence analysts, surveillance, and other investigative measures, even if they don't reach it to the federal level. Additionally, they triage leads from the Polaris tip line, the DHS tip line, other government organizations, and NGOs, as well as many, 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 many people who are in this room today. As far as statistics go, in fiscal year 2022, the group secured 26 criminal arrests, 30 indictments, eight convictions, 29 search warrants on physical locations, six electronic search warrants, and 14 seizures. The average sentence for those sentenced in fiscal year 2022 was 16 years in prison for those engaging in human trafficking offenses. The above referenced cases and statistics are a result of HSI special agents working hand-in-hand with many people in this room, our law enforcement partners, our NGOs, our healthcare industry, right, in order to ensure that we foster public safety in Baltimore City and the surrounding jurisdictions. I'd like to thank the council again for inviting HSI to speak today, um, to discuss our successes and our ongoing efforts to tackle human trafficking within Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we've got the Liquor Board.
Good afternoon, chairs and members of the council. My name is John Chris Malice, and I am the Chief Inspector for the Liquor Board Commissioners for the City of Baltimore. Our commissioners take the fight against human trafficking very seriously and are dedicated in providing any tools necessary for this important mission. The Baltimore City Liquor Board is tasked with regulating and enforcing laws in liquor establishments and adult entertainment establishments. Our inspectors and agents are inside these establishments on a daily basis. As you all know, many of the victims of trafficking work in bars, nightclubs, and adult entertainment. Our agents and inspectors have received initial training to identify victims, and myself and one of my inspectors have trained in sex trafficking seminar in Ocean City, Maryland. Our role in this group is to identify possible sex trafficking within these clubs. With our inspect, with our inspection powers in these establishments, we have full access to all areas of a licensed establishment. After a brief initial review of our investigation, we forward any possible trafficking information to our city, state, and federal partners, and remain dedicated to assist in a support role in the investigation as needed. This group is essential in identifying and helping victims and prosecuting offenders of sex trafficking.
Thank you. Now we've got some collaborative organizations, starting first with the Blue Dot and the Mercy Medical Center.
Hi, everybody. Hello again, Mr. Chair and members of this committee, and thank you again so much. So you've heard a lot today about this term "Blue Dot," and I want to tell you what it is. I'm going to explain the Blue Dot Initiative. With me today is Allison Boss. She's one of my forensic nurses and head of our education committee. We care through Blue Dot for victims of sex, labor, international, elder, and our newest initiative, I'm with the Summit for the Doctors Against Forced Organ Harvesting. Forced organ harvesting is one of our most egregious forms of trafficking that folks are not very aware of. Next slide, please. We are a team of about 30 forensic nurses. For 30 years, we have been the designated center mobily for the city, for wherever victims of crime go, where people can call us and we will do a bodily investigation at no charge for them. We care for victims of sexual assault, that's traditional, right, or evidentiary exams on, on, on rape victims. But did you know that all forms of interpersonal violence were called one? Strangulation, I'm going to explain what we do for those victims. All interpersonal violence, asylees, we have 40 states with immigration attorneys that send us on planes, trains, and buses, those folks seeking legal asylum in this country with nobody to do a federal affidavit and a medical exam for them to go before a federal judge. Baltimore City is the answer to that with our forensic program. We see elder abuse and maltreatment. We work very closely with APS, when adult protective or Office of Healthcare Quality are called. We're called out to help bolster those investigations to be able to risen to the degree of police involvement or our State's Attorney's Office. Human trafficking, of course, which we're going to explain in Blue Dot in a moment. Domestic violence and intimate partner violence, suspects of all major crimes can be referred to us for procurement of that evidence as well. And again, 30 forensic nurses for over 30 years. Next slide, please. We have welcomed over 350 victims of human trafficking through Blue Dot in the last four years since Tom and Monsi started this collaborative. Now you think 350 patients in four years. This is huge, folks. It's huge, and they're not all from here. Please don't think this is all Baltimore City, but Baltimore City is the answer for Blue Dot that nobody else that we can find around us in surrounding states has. We're referred victims from Polaris from the national hotline. We're referred victims from many of our counties, many of our stakeholders, not all from Baltimore City, but we have become the answer. What does Blue Dot do? We offer people something, and this all started because Tom had, and Councilman Burnett had this brilliant idea to put together this, this committee for human trafficking. And I'm sitting there as the only medical representative at the time, and I'm listening to all the agencies talk about there's no central point of intake. What if we've got a vice sting in the middle of the night? What if we rescue a kid in the middle of the night? Everybody's nine to five. And the hand went up that said, "Our forensic nurses are here 24/7, 365." And we're mobile. And so it began. We have since 2007 been educating through Homeland Security, came out and did education to our medical staff and our nurses on what this looks like. They're coming into our emergency room, what do these people look like? And what we would do back in the day before electronic medical charting was put a blue dot, a sticker on their chart, and that let the staff know to call forensic nursing, right? We don't want to say, "Hey, we think we've got a victim of trafficking over in room 37." We want to have a more secure way. And then we went to electronic medical charting. This color blue was based on the federal government's Blue Campaign to end human slavery, and that's where this came from. And then we just adopted this as the Blue Dot Initiative, and it has been, it has been beautiful. It has been the most symbiotic relationship that in my 30-year career in forensic nursing I have ever been a part of, and I am so proud that it's come out of Baltimore City. We provide care for what they need at the moment, and it's generally base needs. You need some sleep? You want, you want some food? Or do you need clothing? Do you need a shower? Yes, there you go. We give that to you. Now, while you're here, what would you like? Would you like some medical care? Would you like a forensic exam? Right? Which is, very few want that at that time. Do you want safety and shelter? Do you want to get on a plane with one of our partners and be able to get the heck out of the state and go somewhere where we've got partners that Tom has set up to take care of you? Do you want to be, do you want somebody from our substance abuse, our expert counselors to talk to you, to get you into detox? To get you into a trauma-informed agency through warm handoffs that our regional navigators for that age group are able to track? And we're so incredibly proud of what this looks like, whether it's a mobile response or whether it's a, a response at Mercy. And one of the things that we've set up is a free clinic where maybe they can come back, or maybe our partners in Prince George's at the Safe Center when nobody else, because they have no documentation, they have no insurance, can bring them to get a medical examination or clothing for court for the Nabbitt case, right? I believe we saw four victims out of the Nabbitt case in Blue Dot, and they came back to us because they had nothing to wear, and we clothed them all to be able to feel good about themselves to walk into that court system. And that, to me, answers base needs that nurses provide. Next slide. One of the things we do is we pioneered the use of alternate light. Years ago, Mercy started using alternate light. You know what it is? Black lights, where you filter out all that other stuff and some of the other wavelengths? And you can see wounds on people under the skin that you can't see with the naked eye. Most of our victims of sex trafficking are strangled many times, in a day, in a week, in a month, but you don't see it. 90% of people, 98% of people are strangled with a hand. 90% of them will never show a mark on the outside of their skin. So please don't see it, but we can show it. And in these pictures that you're seeing on the left, there's fingerprints. There's a shoe print on the right that we were to help solve a case with Baltimore Police. Because it's brilliant that we're able to offer. Why is it done so much to victims of sex trafficking? Because people will pay to do things that their consensual partners won't allow. And if you're consent, and you like strangling somebody during sex, and your consensual partner doesn't want it, you're going to do it to somebody who you're paying for. And that's the reality of this, and we're, we're able to share this with physicians. Next slide. And we're able to help get, um, better medical intervention for these patients. And here's the kicker, 30 days out, you can see the wounds. So if people are not able to get help from us, and maybe bruises have gone away, we're able to see them under the skin 30 days out. And we pioneered research on this. The National Institute of Justice is working with us in a study right now to make this a standard across the United States and beyond, and it's all coming out of Baltimore. How cool is this? So we are proud, as I close today. We're so proud to be a resource for all of our service providers with warm handoffs, even those that are out of state and out of the city. Um, I'm not at liberty to disclose, but I believe Homeland Security just leaked it that on the 13th of February, the White House is announcing something huge. So I hope all of you will be listening to that announcement because I think it's going to be something really, really big that involves Blue Dot. Medicine and nursing are saving lives in a very different way. We're used to coding people. I've been a trauma nurse all my life, but this, watching people be able to be saved in a different way, and those people who don't want our care at the beginning, 20-some percent of them have come back because what have you realized? You've realized that somebody cared enough to offer you something. And for those people who, who are taught not to trust law enforcement or attorneys, they're not taught not to trust medical care providers, right? And so the first thing they say to me is, "Well, what's in it for you? What are you getting out of this?" Because nobody's ever offered them something without trying to take advantage of them. But when they've hit rock bottom, many of them come back, and that's really beautiful for our system. So our goal is to weave Blue Dot into the fabric of Baltimore City, into the victim response, into the judicial process, so that it's woven in, so that as we retire, it's still there, and it becomes a part of what our city is about and what our state is about. And maybe after the 13th, what our federal government implements in this country. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Next up, we've got Turnaround.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Con, Conway, I am so sorry.
Oh, no worries.
And members of the city council. My name is Amanda Rodriguez. I'm the Executive Director of Turnaround, and I want to take a step back in terms of memory lane. Um, it's 2011, it's the middle of the night, and police are engaging in a sting operation, and they enter a hotel room here in Baltimore City, and they engage a young person. She's 15 years old. She's wearing lingerie and sitting on a bed, watching SpongeBob. It's like the epitome of what child sex trafficking is. As the city was just starting human trafficking recognition, Turnaround showed up providing immediate support, and then years worth of long-term services for one of those first-identified human trafficking survivors here in the city. Turnaround is built on three values: empathy, empowerment, and community. We serve survivors of human trafficking, sexual violence, and intimate partner violence. Have been a partner in the city on those issues since the early 90s. Turnaround is the Designated Rape Crisis Center, and we provide comprehensive support for domestic violence survivors, intimate partner survivors, survivors, and sexual violence survivors as well. The agency has been around since 1978, so over 40 years we've been providing these services for the greater Baltimore region. And in 2011, as I stated, human trafficking became an issue area where Turnaround showed up. We were the first comprehensive service provider in the city and in the state. Since then, hundreds, if not thousands, of human trafficking survivors have been identified and served by Turnaround through various partnerships that you've heard today, Department of Juvenile Services, Center for Hope, Blue Dot Campaign. We're very thankful for the partnerships that we have. I'm going to turn it now to Ms. Sai, our Deputy Director, to talk a little bit more about our services.
Thank you. So all of our services are at no cost to survivors, um, and we provide services to all ages and all identities to make sure that no one is excluded, um, so we want to make sure that, um, everyone can receive services. So some of our services include emergency shelter assistance if that is needed, uh, so that survivors can have a safe place, a safe option immediately, um, and not have to worry about, you know, is a bed available, is a place available, um, or is it ready yet? We provide case management services, individual therapy, as well as group therapy. We have drop-in centers that can offer a safe place, um, for survivors to come in during the daytime where they can access any basic need that they have: clothing, toiletries, food, et cetera. Um, but more importantly, the drop-in center has also offered, um, a place where survivors can build community and recognize that they are not alone in this victimization. We've often heard survivors surprisingly say, "Oh, wow." Like, there's others that have also experienced this victimization, not just me. We provide assistance with any type of referral that they need, whether it's legal, medical, you've heard about Mercy's Blue Dot Program, um, as well as mental health, substance abuse, uh, referrals, we will assist them with that in-house. We also have educational assistance, um, whether it's to pursue a specific vocational um, training. We also have educational assistance, whether it's to pursue specific vocational trainings that they are interested in, or attend college, or finish credits that maybe was started and then got interrupted, you know, due to the victimization, or just to complete GED. We implemented an employment readiness training program that has been instrumental and had the pleasure of running those classes myself for a few years and just to be able to speak to the issues that they are dealing with. Traditional employment readiness programs are great. But when you can dig deeper into what they're experiencing as it relates to why is there a gap on your resume in terms of work history? Or why is there no work history on your resume? You may not identify those reasons when you're in a traditional employment readiness program. But for us, those are things that we can actually have open dialogue with survivors there. And then we have outreach support in terms of one of our services. We strongly believe in the importance of outreach. We cannot sit by a phone and wait for someone to make a call to say, hey, we have a human trafficking survivor. And we often know that survivors themselves will not make that initial call. So we believe in meeting them where they are, going out into communities. And so we definitely believe in our outreach efforts. You want me to do statistics? Okay. So just to talk about our accomplishments, I'm going to turn it back over to Amanda and we can cue the slides.
Yeah, if you could, I think it's slide three and four, or four and five. Keep going. Right there. You can stop right there. So we have recently done, in celebration of Anti-Trafficking or Human Trafficking Awareness Month, we went through the accomplishments of this organization since it was such an early provider of these services. And I just want to highlight a couple of those accomplishments over the years. So in 2008, we were the first implementation of a human trafficking law in the state of Maryland. I have the, I don't know if the word is honor, but I had the opportunity to prosecute one of those very early cases. And it was extremely difficult at the beginning because there was not a service provider that was present to provide these services. And Turnaround, just as they do, showed up and started to partner with us to ensure that survivors had access to their, to meet their needs. As Rachel indicated, we opened our drop-in center in 2012. That was in connection with actually our DJI partnership where we implemented the first human trafficking screening tool for children here in the state. That partnership ended up with hundreds of children being identified that were currently engaged with the juvenile justice system. Rachel also indicated our employment readiness program. That was built because we know that survivors of trauma have to first work through their trauma until they're able to gain long-term employment. We had lots of survivors who would gain employment and then unfortunately had 10 steps back because they were not able to have their needs, needs met while they were also employed and would be triggered and then have to have basically start at the beginning again. And then in 2014, and this is something that I want to highlight, Turnaround was implemental in the first iteration of the Safe Harbor Working Group here in the state. You know, I helped draft that bill when I was at the governor's office. But the reality is that Turnaround and the way that Turnaround has provided services is part and parcel for the reason that we not only identify children of trafficking, but we respond in the way that we do to children of trafficking and ensure that they do not have a criminal justice response, which is why I'm so thankful for our collaboration with our various partners today. Go to the next slide, please. So moving on, I always have to highlight this one. In 2016, I had the honor of hiring Rachel so that she ran Turnaround's anti-trafficking program. And as she mentioned, our 2016 outreach model changes in terms of the way that we are responding. We were in diversion programs with the state's attorney's office at the time to ensure that anyone who could potentially be identified in our community had access to those immediate services. Turnaround also received governor's citations in terms of its work in anti-trafficking. Turnaround was a provider for CAST, which was a training for all of the regional rape crisis centers. So Turnaround was the one providing service, training in terms of how they learned about human trafficking and service provision. And then in 2020, Turnaround was recognized in the first issue of the Changemaker Baltimore Magazine Edition. So we were the winner of that award and were highlighted just before the pandemic hit. We were all in a wonderful, or Rachel was in a lovely banquet hall full of people. In 2021, we were named the Regional Navigator of Baltimore County. And then in 2022, we were asked by Howard County to step into that county to provide human trafficking services. So we also are serving the greater Baltimore region in terms of these services. Some of the things that are to come is Turnaround is partnering with the YWCA to open the first house that's responsive to child sex trafficking. Because in the state, we only have 11 beds. Turnaround has identified over 30 children through its Regional Navigator program that are victims of human trafficking. We simply do not have enough beds and no dedicated service delivery in terms of housing for these children. So Turnaround, as we do, show up. I want to highlight that we have two passionate team members here, Jaara and Lauren, if you guys can wave, who provide human trafficking services in, here in Baltimore City. And that passionate team of both our board and our staff really highlight that Turnaround mantra, that Turnaround shows up. We have incredibly resilient survivors in this city. And I am very thankful that they have agencies and representatives like all of you today really showing up for our city. On that note, I just want to thank all of you for your time and for recognizing Turnaround in this way. And thank you for your continued partnership.
Thank you. Last, but not least, we have Araminta. Did I say that correctly?
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Beth Luthy. I am the Director of Program Strategy at Araminta. And I'm here with our CEO, Rhonda Senko. Araminta exists to end the threat and trauma of child sex trafficking. We are based in Baltimore City but serve victims and survivors throughout the state. We are privately funded, but we do have one of the grants from Monti and are very, very thankful for that. I think it's important to note that human trafficking is not a random crime. Traffickers are motivated by one thing, and that's money. And they prey on vulnerabilities. So you've got kids who have experienced lots of different childhood traumas. And then child sex trafficking is an extreme trauma on top of that. So if you go to the next slide, one of the things that Araminta does is try to address barriers to independence. So we work with, we work with minors. We also work with young adults who were victimized as minors. So we actually partner with Center for Hope through their Regional Navigator grant. So they serve kids up through age 17. And then we serve those who are 18 to 24. So in Baltimore City, as you know, I mean, there are many barriers to, to independence for, for lots of people. But when you're working with, with young adults who have experienced this level of trauma, these barriers become extreme barriers. So you've got housing, lack of affordable housing, people who have no credit or low credit, who can't get through a background check because of a variety of reasons, who maybe have children. And then they, they can't get into some of the transitional or congregant care settings. But they can't really find independent care, I mean, independent housing either. Barriers to employment, people who didn't have a high school diploma, people who have trouble, you know, getting a GED maybe because of learning differences. Trouble finding a living wage job that affords them the ability to rent an apartment in Baltimore or the, or the surrounding areas. The soft skills support that's needed when you're, when you're in a job but you're experiencing trauma. Gaps in education, problems finding childcare, transportation. So, so we address all those barriers in an integrated model. If you'll go to the next slide. So to move from crisis to stabilization to independence is a long-term process. So to overcome the kind of trauma that, that survivors of child sex trafficking experience, it doesn't take place overnight. So we commit for the long term. It, it's a long-term commitment that is sometimes years long. So we provide a coordinated care that's case management, starting with the basic needs, helping people sign up for, for benefits that they're eligible for. And then moving into education, employment, wraparound services through referrals, you know, including legal assistance. Then we also, I believe are one of the, maybe the only program in the city that provides one-to-one mentoring. So we have a strong volunteer base and, and we use evidence-based practices in one-to-one mentoring where we pair a survivor with, with an adult volunteer who, who commits for a year to do one-to-one mentoring. We do trauma therapy with an in-house therapist. And then moving into economic empowerment so that people have an opportunity to stand on their own. If you move to the next slide. Our client profile, so 69% of the individuals that we served in 2022 met the Baltimore City Regional Navigator criteria, which basically says they're 24 or under and were victimized in Baltimore City. We also serve individuals who are highly suspected of trafficking. So they, they, they seem to meet the criteria but maybe don't self-identify, as well as individuals who are greatly at risk for being trafficked because of some other form of, of victimization, maybe abuse or neglect, or maybe a sibling who, who has experienced trafficking. So 94% of the individuals that we served last year were under the age of 24 at their initial enrollment with us. 67% under age 18, 27% between 18 and 24. And then 6% who were over the age of 24, who maybe in their adult years realized that what they had experienced as children actually was child sex trafficking. 41% are confirmed survivors of child sex trafficking. 41% highly suspected, and 18% who are at risk. If you'll go to the next slide. So in 2022, we did this intense integrated care with 33 survivors and minors at high risk for child sex trafficking, including 11 of their dependent children through either direct or indirect care. 100-plus hours spent in multidisciplinary collaboration. So in the same way that, that you've heard, we work in a, in a multidisciplinary team fashion where, you know, we're, we're working with people through the foster care system, through DSS. We're working with law enforcement. We're working with other victim service providers to ensure that, that the, the individuals we serve have the care that they need comprehensively. And 500-plus hours of volunteers, volunteer hours in mentoring and advocacy. So again, you know, we are a nonprofit. We're primarily privately funded. And so we connect with volunteers throughout churches and other community organizations. And so in addition to the, the, the services that we provide to, to victims and survivors, we do a lot of education and training. So in 2022, educated 1,000-plus youth and adults through, through churches and schools and other community organizations. And, and so are grateful to, to Councilwoman Burnett for raising this, you know, to the profile that he has. Grateful to everyone in this room for the work that you do and the opportunity to work with you. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. That wraps up all of the reports from across the board. And I, I just want to thank everybody, one, for coming, two, providing, for, for providing so much insight and knowledge. It sounds like we're doing truly some groundbreaking and amazing work. I have a number of thoughts and questions. First, I want to turn it over to sponsor of the bill, Councilwoman Burnett, to start with any questions he may want to start with.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And similarly, thank to all of our presenters and folks in the audience. I know it was a lot, but as you can see, there are a lot of things happening. And would note that this isn't reflective of the full scope of partners that are in the collaborative, that are doing the work. There's a lot of other folks who aren't, have, you have not heard from today that are also doing amazing work on this issue. And so we just, I just want to say publicly, thank all of you for that. The first couple of questions I had were, sorry, I'm trying to figure where to start here. Okay. So the one thing that stood out to me, though, was that there seems to be a lot, through the Blue Dot work, there's a lot of calls coming in through, or things that are being identified through EMS, the calls for service through the national hotline. And then there's also, you know, the, obviously the investigations. There seems to be sort of a, a pretty significant drop-off between the volume of work that we know is, or work that needs to happen, but also where actual cases are being picked up or prosecuted. And so wanted to, to start with the police department. So there's, looking at the, the questions that were sent ahead of time as far as the number of, of cases, there appears to be, again, a pretty significant gap between, you know, 2020, there were zero cases. 2021, there was a bump to 39. Year-to-date, there are 17 that are being investigated. But obviously, we know the scale is a little bit further or, or larger than that. So can we talk about like where the gaps are between sort of the calls we, we know are coming in, the forensic interviews that are either happening via Blue Dot or at the Center for Hope, and moving forward with actual building a case and the prosecutions?
Good afternoon. Major Bishop with the Baltimore Police Department, Commander at the Special Investigation Section. When you talk about the numbers for 2020, as the DC said, we didn't have the human trafficking unit assigned to us in 2020. In 2020, we had what was called a vice unit. So we really didn't start human trafficking until the later of 2021 going into 2022. And in reference to the information that we sent to your office, so that's why you have zero cases for 2020. So once we start ramping up the unit in 2021, we ended the year with 39 cases for that year. And in 2022, we have 17 cases. And I listened to everything that everyone has said. And a lot of the cases may be coming through other resources and services, like you said. So I don't know if they always make it to BPD. I don't know if some people are just maybe getting services and not actually reporting the cases. But those are the total numbers that we actually investigated for those years.
Okay. And just, also just to add on to that, we, we're already at eight cases this year. So I think without touching on some of the issues from 2022, I think the new sergeant and the new push and everything that's going on in that unit and a change, you, you got to remember that police officers had to change from the warrior mentality to the guardian mentality. We were always the ones going in to make the arrests and do everything. Now we're changing to where we're offering services and helping people get to services as opposed to all law enforcement. So that's a huge change, which in the scope of just policing reform throughout the last couple of years.
Yep. And I mentioned that in my writing, that they have received trauma-informed victim center and offender-focused training to assist with helping victims as well.
Okay. And my second question pertaining to this is that there were a number of cases that were either closed or unfounded or considered unfounded. Can you, I guess, help us better understand like the definition? Like, how is that defined with investigatory tools or used to come to that determination?
Okay.
And if there are any next steps where, I know there may be some instances where they just may be hard to prove.
Right.
Referrals out to other services. I guess what, what happens are, you know, my hope is that we're not leaving people who may have been victimized to some degree.
Right.
Sort of stuck, even though there may not necessarily be a case moving forward.
And I may have Lieutenant Latonya Brown come up to assist me with those. She's lieutenant of the unit. But in speaking with her in the unit prior, a lot of times when the cases comes in, come in, they're tips. They're web-based tips or tips from Metro Crime Stoppers or on-view engagements with individuals. And that's the way we get a lot of our information. And sometimes those tips do not pan out to actually human trafficking. So that's when you'll see those cases where the cases may be unfounded after doing an investigation. It did not pan out to be an actual human trafficking case. investigation, it did not pan out to be an actual human trafficking case. And I don't know if you want to add anything before?
Yes, correct.
Okay. How are we doing?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Okay. Lastly, can you, I guess, speak to, and I guess allow Senator Hope to respond, Senator for Hope to respond as well? But in the data that, similarly, just trying to parse together all of the, we sent out a lot of, for folks in the audience, we sent out a lot of questions?
Right.
To different agencies, so there similarly seems to be somewhat of a gap in the number of, or decline, a declining number of cases that are being referred from the forensic interview stage to prosecution. So, for example, just to read out, so there were, in 2020, there were thirty-six reported forensic interviews, thirteen were precautionary for suspected trafficking and exploitation. There were thirty-seven in 2021, twelve in 2022. But there seems to be, again, sort of a decline in whether we're looking at the number of cases referred by either the unit or other governmental agencies. So just trying to understand how we go from such a large number of suspected interviews to only a handful of things that are actually moving forward. And I guess, can you talk about the relationship between you two, like, information sharing? How does this work? I know that there's a multidisciplinary team as well?
Correct.
That fits into this work. So could you just speak to the larger ecosystem of receiving a tip, receiving information, doing interviews with a potential victim, but then the decision to not move forward? Where's, what are some of the causes for that?
Certainly, and if you want me to answer first, I'm happy to, you know. Some of it is about coding, and I think that information goes into, you know, our database, isn't the police's database, and I think everybody codes these cases somewhat differently. So, and I can't honestly speak to, you know, how the police perhaps are coding a case that we're identifying as a human trafficking forensic interview when it gets to them. And so that certainly may account for the discrepancy among data. Data is something that we're still trying to dive down. It hasn't really been something that, the way that the questions were asked of us is not necessarily how we're tracking some of this data, so we're still trying to figure out some of that minutia, which is why we had sent a changed response last night, simply because I think some of the, you know, I think our grants are requiring one level of reporting on the questions posed, you know, is just a different, different way to pull the data, so a lot of it had to be a manual count. I think also by way of example, cases will often be, the way the database is currently built, our databases collaborate, it's part of a national platform, and the way it's currently built is, there'll be, on our side at least, there'll be one primary allegation flagged. And typically, that will be how a case first came into our collective orbit, you know, with the initial report of neglect, physical abuse, sexual abuse, domestic violence, and then it will have additional data entry points as other things are discovered throughout the course of the interview there. And so I think that's part of it as well, that, you know, we may be, they may be ultimately coding it later as trafficking, or we may be coding it later as trafficking, and so I think that's part of it there. You know, it's not a, it's a muddy answer in the sense that I think data is often garbage in, garbage out. And so I think that's at least, from our end of, you know, the data story towards police, and that's a position I would at least share with you, I don't know, you know, once we've done the interview. And then, by the way, some of our interviews aren't all BPD interviews, that, you know, we do interviews for home insecurity, we've done it for Baltimore County, so that goes into our count as well.
Yeah, and I would also add, some of the forensic interviews are not human traffic-related, it could be child abuse. So you would have to pull those out of those numbers as well. And I know in reference to the questions that we were sent, there was an error in the documentation as far as the unit responding to the Center of Hope for forensic interviews. The Human Trafficking Unit detectives do respond to those forensic interviews at the center, and that was corrected. So we do respond to those, and there hasn't been a lag in us responding to those interviews. And one other thing is, as I was saying about some of the cases could be child abuse, it may start out as being human trafficking, but then once it's further investigated, it could be a child abuse case, whether sexual, whether physical, so you have to take those numbers into consideration as well.
So I guess what would be, and this is another question that you asked about, to me directly, I said I don't want to disturb your thunder if you want to hold on to record, but I guess, is there a way, so it sounds like there's different ways that the data is being collected and being returned out, I guess, through funders, through the governor's office or through Monzie. Is there a need for some sort of more centralized way of reporting both across agencies so that there is just a single data set that everybody's pushing information into, rather than sort of counting things, it seems like everyone's counting things a little bit differently?
Right.
And so it makes it hard to get a very clear picture of what everyone is doing, where the calls are coming from, where there may be gaps in service, or things that just need to be flagged as like, hey, these are emerging trends, I'd lift up benefits trafficking being one, that like, is somewhat of an area that I know my office is, and I'll have Kim talk a little bit about it if you don't mind in a second, about that sort of, that scope of work, but I guess, is anyone, like, collecting this in a centralized way? And if not, why not? And if, and I guess, second to that is, you know, what entity would be best to do that?
Yeah, I think centralized data is sort of the, you know, is the ideal to be able to do that, and it's a conversation that comes up in Child Fatality Review. It's a conversation I think we've been all working with for a long time, and I certainly am interested to hear everyone else's opinion on it. One of the challenges with centralized data end up being both the MOUs, the HIPAA requirements, the privacy requirements that some cases are involving Child Protective Services, and we've tried for, short answer is, I agree with you. It would be great to have a centralized data repository, to have one set of data, one set of that. To do that, and it's not impossible, but we would need, whether it's laws passed or, and MOUs enacted, to be able to allow Child Protective Services to share information with Turnaround or Mercy to be able to share information with, you know, various partners there. It's all possible, it's exceedingly complicated. And I know that's a lousy answer to give, but I think that it's, Human Services 1-202 prevents the distribution of information on child cases unless there's a court order or in certain prescribed circumstances. It's doable, and I think that's one of the purposes of a hearing like this, is to surface this sort of issue, to say, you know what, to really address trafficking, we're going to pass certain legislation that allows this information sharing there and breaks down those barriers that I think often we're all into doing, but our lawyers tell us we can't do it. And I think that's, you know, that's part of how it would happen, how it would need to happen there.
I, we had a sidebar earlier, which ties exactly to this conversation, and I was thinking a lot about being the person who's always thinking about data in the room, how we're tracking information, how we're making sure that, because I didn't personally realize that there were so many different types of trafficking. And even more, our ability to differentiate once, you know, once we identify these types of trafficking, sex trafficking, labor trafficking, elder trafficking, international trafficking, organ harvesting, and how much of that we're seeing within the city, so that as these numbers go up or down, it can tell us what to do with our various city agencies, and we have cops on the ground coming in contact with folks, how they can figure out what to look for and what to do. And my question, and I don't know who would be responsible, it sounds like, my guess is we could try and do this at the city level, but my guess is it would probably be more appropriate at the state level, given the sort of wide expanding, or even maybe at the federal level. Maybe that's the secret that might come out. But I think there needs to be some ability to keep track of this stuff so that we can have a strong sense of what is and is not working. And with all the great work that we're doing here, I'm always thinking about how we can keep track of that progress. I, for the Department of Social Services, is, do we keep track of data like this, and would it be appropriate perhaps for the department to be a repository of information like this?
So our department would only have trafficking data regarding children. We did request data from our state office, Maryland Department of Human Services, that's who would need to give us that data in an ad hoc report. We don't have that readily available. We did make that request, but they did not return any data to us yet.
Okay.
You know, I think a model could be looking at the Child Fatality Review legislation that requires that, you know, when we're part of a Child Fatality Review in each jurisdiction, then we're allowed to be able to share this data, and then to be able to do a statewide human trafficking review group that, you know, would have both a state body and then each jurisdiction would have that. At least that would then legislatively allow partners to be able to share that information. Once we do a Child Fatality Review, it's, you know, everyone's agreed to the various penumbras of confidentiality to be able to share that there. And in our case, the Department of Health in the city manages that, they're keeping track of the data, and I think it provides a good model, both, you know, locally, statewide, and nationally, as to how we could share that data. And look, the other data point notable is that Mercy and, you know, Debbie Holbrook, they've seen three hundred and fifty-some cases over the last several years, but as you've pointed out, you've been this great resource for the region, so there are cases that are presenting in Baltimore City, but they don't have a jurisdiction of Baltimore City. So it's, you know, while worthwhile to figure out of the three fifty, how many of them were city, how many of them were other areas there, but that's part of the challenge of, there's a lot of numbers out there. And I'm with you, I support that, to be able to find a way, I think we've been trying for years to be able to get coordinated data out there.
I appreciate that, thank you. Got some more homework for Councilman?
It's a good bill.
Yeah. Okay.
I know others, I mean, I have a ton of questions, but I won't.
I'll jump in with a couple of my thoughts, and forgive my questions for being much higher level. You know, my familiarity with the topic is growing. So we touched on some of the data pieces, give me one second. I was thinking, as folks were talking about this process, I've been thinking more broadly about crime and the sort of timeline of crime. And much like every crime, the crime of trafficking people for your own benefit has its own timeline as well. What are some of the things, and I think someone touched on this, some of the things that lead people to end up as victims of human trafficking? And what are, what are we doing, both as a city, both with our partners as well, to begin to get ahead of those things and to have early warning signs when we do come across people who exhibit those problems? This is a broader question, and I suppose really anybody in this room could answer it, but I'm curious if we thought that much about it.
Right, so as someone mentioned earlier, the traffickers pretty much look for vulnerable individuals. I mean, you have people who are homeless, you have people who have been victims already of sex abuse, physical abuse, mental, and they look for that. And that's why we do have a lot of victims within the city who become victims of human trafficking, so they look for vulnerable people.
And I can elaborate a little bit, sir. You see, and it's not much unlike the movies, you'll see the people at the airports and the rail stations and the bus stations looking for that vulnerable person that comes in to the city. I have a friend who's a police officer at the airport, and they had one there. They got the young lady on a flight out, and, but she came in through the airport. So lots of those same places that you actually see on TV where the vulnerability of the person by themselves, runaways, homeless, unfortunately, we have our fair share of those in the city that get, become vulnerable to these predators.
And one good thing about the agency and the partnerships that we have is, my unit is also responsible for sex assault investigations, missing persons investigations, and child abuse cases. So when we look at the age ranges of people involved in human trafficking and victims of human trafficking, it works together because if you have juveniles that's missing, they may be involved in human trafficking. Sex assault cases may be involved in trafficking. So all of us working together as a team, it helps us find a solution. And as far as the detectives, when they go out or they're doing web-based investigations, it's more of a resource to try to get the victims and survivors resources and help so that they will no longer be on the streets or no longer be victims of human trafficking. It's more of a help, not to try to prosecute, but to help them and to show them a different way of life.
Yeah, part of the innovative approach we're having too is by having our Missing Youth Response at the center as well, where we're finding pre-trafficking. I think these are kids who are the most at risk of becoming trafficked, and so when they're flagged and sent to us by the police department's Missing Persons Division, we're able to provide them with the therapy and the resources to prevent them from becoming trafficking victims as well.
I want to add too, as well, when we did the informational session and webinar pertaining to males, one of the things that was reported was that when you look at the gang activity, you're thinking that they're just doing this. A lot of the individuals, and this statistic show it, the intersectionality of it, is that they engage in those behaviors and join the gangs for security. And the LGBT community are at higher risk of homelessness, so that therefore it makes them eight times more likely to be victims of human trafficking. And so when it comes to the male population, you're looking at the criminal activities and saying, oh, they're just doing these things. Some of them are forced to sell drugs, and at night, they're forced to have sex with other people. And so it's more, and there's research out there to show this.
And one of the big things that I think we, none of us have even talked about yet, that we have a detective that's completely dedicated to internet crimes. So a lot of this takes place over the internet for meeting up, so we have a detective that's assigned to investigate that.
Deputy Commissioner, could you use the mic?
Yeah, we couldn't really hear you, you have the mic.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I said, what happens is a lot of, we haven't talked about yet is the internet. We have a lot of those incidents occur over the internet, so much so that we have a detective that's dedicated to just internet crimes against children. So it's something that we've been looking at since we started this unit, simply because we know a lot of it, and more and more webpages coming out, more and more different sites that they try to hide them, that we have to have investigators that have certain log-ons and different things to try to investigate some of these crimes that are taking place on the internet.
And we need to pay more attention to children and young adults and their ACEs scores, these acquired trauma scores that lead, that have shown us that they're indicative of bad healthcare outcomes when they grow older, but these are what we're seeing, right? These children and young people who have never felt safe, who have watched gun violence, that have all of these things in this ten-point score. If we would pay attention to this ACEs score, we would embrace some of these, some of these people before they ever become our most vulnerable citizens.
You hit a nail on the head that we hit on the head last week in multiple different hearings, and I think I'm seeing a trend here, no shocker, we know what ACEs scores represent, adverse childhood experiences for those, everyone in this room knows that, but for those maybe watching online. I think, my thought immediately goes to some of the work that Councilman Burnett has already done in posting signage so that folks that may be in certain areas where workforce trafficking or sex trafficking is more common or more likely to happen, folks can find some opportunity for help. You know, we know airports to be one of those problems, you know, certainly we as a city, you know, our airport is not technically under our jurisdiction, but nonetheless, finding ways to maybe get that information up there as well, or have folks at the airport better trained to identify, things like that. And this goes for elders as well.
Just to reiterate that we just did that training, and that they are on board with this whole model, so there's definitely a regional approach, and they're with us on this whole thing.
And to tie this full circle to the question earlier about how we're tracking this information and keeping a good sense for, for the types of abuse that we're seeing, the types of trafficking that we're seeing, we're going to need different approaches for each different type of trafficking. So elder trafficking is going to look very different so far as posting and notification and warnings in sex trafficking or international trafficking. So that's just my head running. I'm always thinking about data and how we can leverage to be just a little bit smarter on the front end and especially on the back end, but with that, I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Burnett, Councilwoman Porter, who had a question as well.
Sure. And, you know, thank you, Chair, for raising that, while you're focused on the data, I'm focused-
the data, I'm focused on communication, how we are communicating this out behaviorally to health populations. And so, Ms. Nurse Deborah, I think you're amazing, and I just wanted to commend you all on the Blue Dot Program, excuse me, as a former intern in the emergency room. I remember those blue dots. I remember that coordination, not only from the, you know, just from the nurses, but the LPNs, the other nurses that not historically are kind of pushed into the forefront. You know, they see all of that, even down to the dietary workers, you know? And so I'm super appreciative of all the work that you all are doing in my district as it relates to human trafficking and prostitution. We have seen significant engagement within our communities. There's still a lot to go. I will share that with you. We get those types of calls, not only from our constituents, but from our hospital systems, and also community advocates, and our schools as well. And so I do appreciate the work that you all are doing, as well as the entire collaborative. I think this is a very, very important topic, and this is only scratching the surface of what needs to be done, not only from a municipal level, not only with resources, systemic thinking, and communication from our agencies and within our agencies, but also at the state and federal level as well. So I'll start with my first question. Earlier in the presentation, we talked through some of the assessments as it relates to how to identify a person that has been human trafficked, whether it be in a formal setting or a non-formal setting. My question has to do with how do we identify those that do not want services or do not participate in services? It seems as though, from a communications perspective, that assessment is not capturing those people that need to be kind of, you know, nudged in a direction that promotes their health. And so can you all explain to me how you all are engaging that population? And so not the formal population of saying, yes, I have been human trafficked, but those that, those sort of non-traditional factors that go into identifying a person?
Well, I will say that because these are the most vulnerable, and especially some of the young people that are angry when they're brought in to us by providers, it's a way that you talk to people, right? It's a way that you get away from that God-forsaken computer that you're doing an assessment with, and you look at somebody at the end and say, you know what, because I care about you, and we are within, we are part of an institution that really cares about you, can I ask you something? You've been here eight times, and we are so happy to take care of you, but you've been here eight times for whatever it is, a broken bone, a sexually transmitted disease, whatever it is. Something going on that we can help you with. And they're going to test you, right? People are going to test you. They have no reason to believe that you're doing something for them for nothing. And I'm telling you, we've done surgeries for nothing. One of the biggest things I learned from a trafficking survivor, from a big federal case, was when she said, it's better that I got arrested and went to federal prison than to have offered the services that were offered to me for safety. And the reason for that is, she had been raped by her dad and people in her family, and it was nothing but abuse. And so for you to offer services for a safe, happy environment, she didn't know what that looked like. She said that would be like dunking her in a vat of ice cubes, ice water. But to go to somewhere where she was safe and know that she could slowly get out of it, that ended up being the best for her. Everybody's different, you know? But I think it comes down to talking to people where they are and saying, we care. We care about you, and we believe you. You're safe here. If you don't want it today, okay, 24 hours a day, come on back. And like I said, 20-some percent of those have. So that's my experience. That's the medic's experience who are coming in every week with somebody.
To kind of piggyback on that, and so when we do law enforcement trainings, and we do the trainings we did with the fire department, I also did, trained over 300 health techs from the Baltimore City School System at their, in service at the convention center this summer. And we tell them that you might see 100, out of 100 persons you see, that you look at them and say, I see the human trafficking, I see the tattoos, I see this, I see everything. Out of 100 people that you see, you might only get three that say, you know what, I want your help. And Colleen put a great slide up there. At that point, we're planting the seed, because we're telling them, say, listen, we're not, we're here to help you. We're here to help. We can help you anytime. You call me tonight, tomorrow, next week, next month, next year, whenever, we're here. And I always say to these guys, I say, you can take a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. But eventually, the horse gets thirsty. And when the horse gets thirsty, we have the water. So we plant that seed, and it's really important to let them know. And we tell the cops and the firefighters, don't get frustrated because you only got three out of 100. That's amazing. You saved three lives. So look at it that way. And you planted the seed, because maybe two weeks down the road, they're over at Mercy's knocking on the door. You don't even know about it.
I'd like to also speak to the different thresholds. Deb and I work with the patient care perspective, right? And so we work with red flags and behaviors and clinical presentations that point us to trafficking, right? And oftentimes, Deb's efficacy studies and things that they have for their program will validate that it's trafficking, but it doesn't always come through meeting that strict federal and prosecutorial guidelines, right? The forced fraud and coercion that's required with the commercial sex and all those things. But I think it's important to bridge that gap to say, again, what I kind of mentioned in my section, it's just, just because we're seeing the same thing differently doesn't mean it's not the same thing. And sometimes John and I'll talk about that it might not be a case yet, someone might not be willing to admit it yet, but that we're referring folks in that need help and that they're in situations. And so we operate from this medical perspective, and our folk, our partners in BPD are working from a legal perspective and needing to meet certain threshold for a case. And I think that we have to acknowledge those differences, but also the fact that there's a timeline and it's a continuum. And so maybe that they're in progress, not exclusive. And so how we will continue to get folks to Deb. And some of them, you know, with the numbers that you share with us that don't want the medical, don't want the police involvement, but they want the medical care, and they just want to get out. And then other people are ready for that involvement. And I think that there's room for both, for bridging gaps and language and acknowledging different thresholds and different things.
I just want to be a voice for the males. So one of the things is believing them when they come and say that it's happened. A lot of times when males discuss that they've been sexually assaulted or even trafficked, they're not believed because they feel like you should be strong enough to protect yourself. And we don't provide that safe space for them. So I think that's very important, if they show up, believe them. And then you have to ask the same questions, the same examination you're giving to females. You got to shine a light. You got to go somewhere that you don't normally go. Ask questions about being harmed in places that you don't normally talk about. And I think that's what's missed when it comes to the males. And because of that, you have to like be a voice for them, but guide them through it in a soft way and not a demeaning way.
And ma'am, what's your name again? Forgive me.
Sheri Jones.
Sheri Jones. And you hit the nail right on the head, because not only, I was looking for that answer. I understand it from a strictly, and I'll say cis-heterosexual woman's perspective, but when we are looking at it from LGBTQ plus population, that population, I think, completely is missed and completely off the charts as it relates to these types of issues. And so I'm glad that you addressed that, because that was something that was revolving in my brain about how our LGBTQ plus population is being human trafficked, and the assessments are not being, are not historically picked up. And also, I would also kind of go a step further, looking at it from a racial, cultural, geographical perspective of how these individuals are sex trafficked. So I would encourage you all to look through not only just, you know, just a binary lens, but looking at it from a multifaceted approach, because assessments are very different depending on, I mean, healthcare is very different depending on the region, depending on even just the age group, you know? So.
And I do want to add, through our public awareness committee, Sheri had mentioned earlier, last year, late last year, we had partnered with Nathan Earl, who is an expert and has lived experience. And he gave us some tools for assessing specifically boy and male victims of this crime, which is in one of our toolkits. And we had an entire public awareness event on that topic in particular. It was a two-part series. The first part is recorded, and we're happy to send that out, but that won't be the last one that we have.
Wonderful. That makes me very happy. My second question, it actually is specifically geared towards, I know there's not a health insurer here, but one of the revolving themes that we're experiencing in healthcare is redefining how we approach value within our insurer's system. And so those value-based reimbursable codes, I noticed the trend within a few of the community-based organizations, is that, one, there are not enough beds, and two, there's not enough resources related to this particular, to this particular issue. And I'm wondering, has there been any conversation at the state level regarding a reimbursable code that can begin to re-advocate and re, thank you so much, I knew you were going to guess. Has there been any conversation about that from a state-level perspective?
I'd say the short answer is no. But the broader answer is, there is some of this discussion happening nationally. The first step of it was activating reimbursement codes for community violence work. And so Maryland is the second or third state in the nation to be able to pass legislation that allows Medicaid billing for community violence intervention work. Interestingly, the way the legislation was written, I think we mirrored the Connecticut legislation, was that it really defines the reimbursable to be intra-community gun violence. If you and I don't know each other and I shoot somebody, you know, that's what's reimbursable there. What is not reimbursable is what I think all of our practitioners have been asking for for 30 years now, is to be able to have these services with a different level of reimbursement there. And I think that would suddenly, you know, make a different level of provision and access available. It's a little bit of a way. And I think part of the challenge with it is, you know, Maryland is under this unique total cost of care model as well, that while as health systems were incentivized to keep people out of the hospital, there's also a finite pool of money. And frankly, there's, you know, a question at play as to, you know, is the Maryland experiment working?
Yes.
So it's an interesting moment to have this there, but I think you're on something.
And you hit the nail right on the head. I think there's a conversation, particularly with this administration regarding how we look at the Medicaid reimbursable model, what that model looks like. And I'm familiar with the Connecticut legislation. They have their barriers too up there as well, as well as Maryland. So I'm wondering, even though this is a time where, you know, at the state level, we are kind of like really changing the narrative, this may be an opportunity to strike while the iron is hot. So not only looking at it from a practitioner perspective, and I understand the value-based system with hospitals and repeat occurrences and things of that nature, but there are additional quality care measures that can be integrated that segments that data out so that you have a clear profile of what that code would look like.
Yeah, it would be great. And it'd be great to have the advocacy with that, too. I mean, look, a lot of our practitioners, I mean, sort of in the broader child abuse field, have been looking for a level of reimbursement for years, that if that child abuse pediatrician goes to court, continues to go to a team review, you know, there's no reimbursement there for that. And so the, tangentially related, but the sexual assault reimbursement fund has been flat for 30 years now. And so there's just not enough money going into these areas there. And I think that's part of the advocacy of, if we want to do this right, and I think that a lot of what we've heard today also is what leads to trafficking are the vulnerable populations who've been victims of child abuse and witnessed to neglect. And if we can do better by them, then hopefully, they won't end up being victims of trafficking. And I think we have to bolster up a lot of those services there. But you raise a great point, and I think it's something that needs to be advocated higher up and lead the nation on it.
In those cases that are sexual assault cases, because of VAW legislation, we're not able to bill a patient or their insurance company. That is VAW legislation, if it's coming, if your state is receiving those funds, right? So we've got that federal stipulation that lies above us, and we work around it. We've been able to be successful. The other thing is ICDM codes, right? Yeah, that's, we thought, okay, that's how we're going to track this in the hospitals. We're going to get doctors to put on these cases where you do ICDM codes that say, okay, these are our diagnoses for the day, and that's what's going on their chart. There is this huge pushback, because then that flags them forever, right? It's sort of like a legal case where you've been arrested for prostitution, right? Only in the medical community, everybody's going to know it.
Or cancer marker, right, and it raises your insurance rates up.
Or your insurance rates when you do become, have insurance and gainfully employed. So there's just a whole lot of conversations that I would love to be a part of, if you all have those sidebars.
And just to reiterate Deb's point, that's something that came out of our medical subcommittee. That was, I mean, obviously, Deb has experienced otherwise, but that was a topic that we have addressed within the medical subcommittee, that some of the physicians on our subcommittee brought that up as one of the topics, in one of our last meetings, we had that on our agenda.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Councilman Burnett for your efforts. I mean, this is huge that we have so many people and collaborators involved with this. I mean, this is a massive, massive effort. So I'm grateful. I'm sure, you know, once we are able to get a system together, because I think so it's what you were aiming for, is let's get a system together to address this issue, comes together, and we can really make sure that we're addressing this, that would be great. And to Mercy, I mean, I'm just so proud that we have such a great resource, that you all have been a resource for so long. And, I mean, I just learned about it. So like, we got to shout it from the rooftops when we can. I know there's some things that we can't say about it, but I think it's amazing. So thank you. And also, you know, Homeland Security didn't have to be here today, and, you know, we appreciate it, and we appreciate everything that you're doing. I had a couple of questions. One is, I saw in this report recently, this is to the state's attorney's office, that you're not designating between cases that are human trafficking and other types of cases? Are you just now trying to figure out what that system is going to look like? Use the microphone, please. Use the microphone.
Thank you. It is not so easy to track the cases as they come in if they're not charged, for instance. So if we charge human trafficking as the top charge, the rudimentary computer systems, that's the court system where we get a lot of our data from to populate our database, the top charge will show. If we elect not to charge it, it is harder to track. And one of the notes I made is that we're going to need to find resources for sort of like a coordinator for this that's going to maintain, I think, an independent database for cases that we review, and maybe we charge third-degree sex offense, which would be sex between a 14- or 15-year-old and somebody over 21, which carries prison time, which carries sex offender registration. But in our opinion, based on what that victim who's been traumatized is able to tell us and to testify to in court, that's what they're able to give us as a victim and a witness. So that's what we'll charge and go forward on. Other times, I note historically, people have charged human trafficking, but then gone forward on the third-degree sex offense or other sex charges. We also sometimes have to not charge a case because the victim won't cooperate at all. So another note I made is, can we track who had a victim advocate, who was supplied sort of that wraparound services and still declined to cooperate? Or, you know, what are the factors that go into people falling off of their willingness to cooperate? Because if we charge a case, at least at that moment, they should have been willing. We should have been able to do an interview. We'll rely on forensic interviews. There's Law &amp; Maryland that says if it's an underage victim, and we have a certified forensic interview versus just a body-worn camera, let's say, that testimony can come in, but the child must be present to testify first, and then we can use prior recorded statements. And the way court works in Baltimore City is, the first court date, the kid might be cooperative. The second date, the child or adult may not be findable to us. And if we don't go to trial that date, we live to fight another day. So there's just so many factors that we don't currently track. fight another day. So there's just so many factors that we don't currently track. And so one thing I want to do is figure out if there is a way to look at who's getting as much services as we could possibly could give them, and see if we still have a falloff of victims. And there's also a choice people make as prosecutors in intimate partner violence, and domestic violence, and child abuse, and all the traumatic victim cases we have, is, are you going to issue a body attachment for somebody that fails to appear?
Right.
Are you going to have them held overnight prior to trial to guarantee they'll show up? That's something that's upsetting to me to contemplate. So I think it's a process. So I would say we're clearly not, when we did the task of trying to do a retrospective analysis, it was very hard to find the data that we were looking for. I think going forward, we're going to track it manually. I really do want to engage more with victim advocates to give us the highest chance of success. And I guess I'm also just going to comment on the relationship between our service provider and forensic interview partners in prosecution. You know, traumatized victims have very chaotic memory. It's part of how they protect themselves. So they give you something, and they give you a little more. You know, we have very strict requirements, right, of place, the date range, or a date, you know, hopefully a day, but at least a range, and who did what when. And some victims can give you all of that, and some just can't. And so I would say, I don't know what the numbers would be, and I hesitate to guess, but there's a lot of cases where the interviewer knows this child, or this young adult, or person was trafficked. But when we review a case for prosecution, we have to find, be creative sometimes to find what fits with what was revealed in terms of what's chargeable, where we have all the elements lined up. Because if we charge somebody, we have a constitutional requirement that we believe we can convict them of it, that we have all the elements necessary. So I don't blame the victims. I don't blame the forensic community. But, you know, the criminal prosecution, obviously, is what I'm passionate about. I want to hold offenders accountable, but I don't want to take victims through a process that's not going to be successful. So...
No, and I appreciate that detailed answer, because some of it could just be, you know, how you record things in the data and all of that. But it seems like it's a lot more involved in terms of, you know, the fact that you... And the other thing is that once you've come up with this, it's going to be important to figure out whether we need to go to the General Assembly to, you know, insert in cases. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, so just putting that out there. You know, for having somebody who's just been through a hugely traumatic event, to live through that hugely traumatic event in court, the likelihood, I know this, the likelihood that they do it is minimal, right? So if we're... The whole goal here is to stop human trafficking and get these guys off the street and stop doing this. And so is there, you know, this is something for the General Assembly to think about, you know, what other things can be used? Because it's not fair for those victims to have to go through this, and then they know, even when they don't, you know, go through it, they may feel bad because they didn't go through it, because now this guy's going to do this to somebody else. Like, it's just a cycle that just doesn't, it doesn't work, it doesn't make sense. So that's an editorial comment. I mean, you can certainly comment on that if you want. But there's, it just, it's just mind-boggling to me that, you know, the obstacles that are put in the way of making this happen.
Yeah, I guess just personally, I would say, I can honestly say, having done this work, not so much in human trafficking, but pretty horrific victim cases, you know, survivors are very resilient people with the right resources. They can go to court. We can file motions that they're allowed to be seated further from the defendant or facing away, or, you know, there are a lot of things you can do to make someone feel more comfortable in court. Nobody likes going to court. The good news about this sort of slow process is people often have a certain amount of time to heal before they would have to testify at a trial. It's usually not right after things happen. But some, you know, I guess I agree with you. It is a sort of tough existential question about how you can meet your constitutional burden, right? Everybody has a right to face their accuser and have their testimony be tested by cross-examination. And, you know, we prepare them. I've personally never had a victim who said they regretted testifying, even though, you know, it was not great for them. So I think we can do it. I'm just pointing out that the standard, knowing the stakes are so high for them, and that the process is not like they're going to go to court on a specific day.
Right.
Like booking a hotel room, right? They show up, they're delayed, they come back, they come back. So I think, I wrote down this, that we really need to bring in and make sure we're working with all our advocacy partners to make sure that victims and their families are supported as much as possible, so we don't lose them. But I think there is reason for the disconnect. I'm just going to try to stick to answering the question roughly, and not all the other stuff I want to say.
No, I appreciate the complexity of the issue. So thank you.
Councilwoman, I just want to be cognizant of time.
Uh-huh. Well, my other, I have a lot of other questions, but my other, I have a statement, and then, well, I'll take my statement at the end, but a question about, we were talking about diverse communities, obviously getting services. I just want to make sure that all of the partners and all of the collaborators and everybody involved here also speak, not everybody, but there's a chance for Spanish speakers to, you know, make sure that we've got all of the partners hiring somebody who's, you know, speaks Spanish or from the Latino community, because our community is growing. This issue is growing in our community, and if we don't have the, it's not just about hooking them up to language line, that's just not going to work. And make sure that they, that, you know, someone from our community who understands what they're going through, given, you know, the, you know, in our community, machismo is there, it's there, it's there. And what the girls are going through in a lot of cases, it's really horrible. And so we have to have somebody who's actually there to make sure that that's understood. So I just, I guess, to make a statement about the fact that, you know, at some point in time, if we can get the data where you all are on hiring, will be really, would be really helpful. And then my last thing is, I want to follow up with the Health Department, not today, on the benefits trafficking thing. I have a specific thing that happened that I need to follow up with them on, in my district. So just putting that out there. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Cohen.
Can I just comment real quick on the language component?
Sure.
So we recently put a guide together for professionals, and it is updated regularly by me. And one of the questions that we added for this next round is for organizations and agencies to please indicate two things. One, who they have in-house that speaks other languages fluently, and two, if they use the language line. And so part of our spreadsheet will be tracking what organizations speak what language, so that when other professionals are making referrals, they know which ones are preferable when it comes to specific languages. That was something that came up regularly when we're talking about victim services. And so that is a part of how we are tracking that. A lot of our organizations have staff members that speak other languages, which is a huge benefit to Baltimore City. And so now we will actively be tracking that. And then for the benefits trafficking, our office just took on an Adler University fellow who is going to be launching a public awareness campaign on elderly trafficking and benefits trafficking. She's doing a lot of research. Georgia is the only state to have passed actual criminal language, making benefits trafficking and elderly trafficking a criminal component. And so we're hoping to do the research and bring that back to Maryland.
Well, my, just real quick on that note, thank you. I'm so glad that you're already thinking about the language piece on this. On the benefits issue, I had a constituent who we EP'd, okay, and sent to the hospital, I'm not going to name any of the institutions, was then sent to an assisted living by that institution to a place that does this. And luckily, he had the foresight to say, to walk out of there, okay? If our institutions are referring people to folks that are going to steal their money, that's a problem. So that's where I am on that.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. We're going to go to Councilwoman Cohen for his two questions, and then we're going to go to testimony.
Mr. Chair, thank you to all the folks here. I want to recognize that collaboration in this city is hard, and this demonstrates some really powerful collaboration, and that takes leadership. So props to our colleague, Tom, Kimmy, and everybody else who's doing this work. One of the phrases I've heard a lot today is "trauma-informed," which makes me really happy. We're the first city in America to have legislated trauma-informed care into law, so it's good to hear it in the work that you all are doing with a population of folks who experience a very, very high degree of trauma. To your point, many aces before they're part of trafficking. However, I worry that that term becomes diluted and becomes a catch-all for too many things, and starts to lose meaning. So I'm curious, especially from the law enforcement folks, if you could define what it means to be doing this work from a trauma-informed perspective, maybe starting with BPD.
Good afternoon. Again, so for us, some time ago, I want to say 2018, before I even became a member of the sex offense unit, there was a report put out in the news that we victim-blame. So being trauma-informed is getting away from blaming the victims and actually listening to, listening to what they have to say and taking it in, listening and stop just asking questions, understanding that when you go through trauma, it affects your brain in different ways. So if you come to the police department and you do an interview, and on Monday, you say this happened, but on Wednesday, that changed, and then on Friday, it changes. It doesn't mean that the victim or the survivor is telling a lie. It's trauma and the effect of trauma on the brain. And I think as police officers, as the deputy commissioner said earlier, we're boots on the ground. We want to go fight crime. We want to do this. But it's about slowing down and taking the time to listen to what the victim says. And all the pieces to the puzzle may not add up, but it doesn't mean that what the victim or survivor is saying is not the truth. And we also implemented, giving victims and survivors what we call a sleep cycle. So if you are a victim of a rape on Monday, and we get the case, and we come out, and we're going to investigate it in the past, we just want to get you in a box, we want to interview you, you want to get all the information, you want to ask all the questions, no. You have to give them time to sleep off what they've been through, so they can get their thoughts, their mind, and everything together. So when they sit down to you, they can kind of put the pieces to the puzzle for you. So that's my opinion of what trauma-informed has been, and that's what I'm rolling down to all of my detectives and supervisors in my unit.
I appreciate that response. I guess my concern is, you know, you mentioned a report in 2018 about police sort of revictimizing victims. Well, there was just a very recent report that essentially said exactly the same thing, out of the University of Baltimore's Center for, I'm going to get it wrong, but I think it was Criminal Justice Reform. Heather Workin was the lead investigator. And I guess my concern is, it seems that this pattern within BPD remains a persistent problem, which is treating victims either like witnesses who are themselves potentially part of a crime, or just not giving them the space to, you know, as you talked about, to really calm down, take breaths, not be pestered, not have officers in their face reliving their worst moment. I think there is a whole science and set of practices around how to be more trauma-informed from a victim services standpoint for law enforcement. And I'm still not convinced, based on what we heard, actually in this committee pretty recently, from Dr. Workin and some of the team over there, that we are implementing best practices.
I can actually help answer that. That report that you're talking about did come out from DJA, I mean, BJA, but that was a report that we asked for as a police department. We knew we had issues in the past. So we asked them to complete that report, and we've been working to correct that ever since the report came out, even before the report was published. We knew about it months ahead of time, so we were working on it. That's why we have a victim services unit. That's why we've retrained all of our officers, and actually led to something that's beneficial to police officer, our health and wellness, because our men and women see the same trauma that everyone else deals with maybe one time or two times. For example, I tell you about the horrific scene on Pennsylvania Avenue Saturday night, that a whole shift of people had to see. And so we're looking and working, like, just for example, we were trying to work with their family. So our victim service, that's what the whole purpose of our victim services is for, to basically, we started with homicides. They respond to every homicide. We're working up to where we can build, have them go to every single shooting. We just can't get the capacity built up quick enough. We have the funding. We have everything in place to hire more people. We just have to be able to hire them. But the biggest thing we did with our officers, ever since the consent decree has been here, is we've spent more money and more time retraining our officers to get away from that, what I had mentioned earlier, that warrior mentality, to being a guardian mentality. And I think we're, we got a long way to go, but we've come a long way as well, because we've got some outstanding men and women out there who deal with stuff every day and continue to do a great job.
Yep. And just to add to that, the Special Investigations Unit is under the consent decree. So on a weekly basis, we work with DOJ, and as a part of our partnership in working with DOJ, if you want to call it a partnership, they actually pull our cases. So when they pull the cases, they review the written documentation, as well as the interviews and all the interactions that we have involved in the case. And they pretty much audited us to see if we're moving into that direction of being trauma-informed, victim-centered, and offender-focused. And I see vast changes that we're doing a great job in that way.
And I can speak. I was on the Board of End Violence Against Women for years, and we developed a program called We Believe, right? It's just about believing people. Like, if you come out for Olympics, if we didn't believe that Larry Nassar was doing this, that whole thing never would have come to light. So on our waiting room wall, we've got "We Believe" written and translated into eight languages. I have seen a greater improvement in Baltimore police than ever I have in the past, how long have I been here? Seventeen years. And I'll just tell you that, because I see officers bringing victims into us. And I see them, their patience has improved. Their, I hate to say it, but kindness has improved. Their ability to be believing what they say, however wild it sounds, has improved. And we see this every day. Our special victims unit, I lecture nationally, and I tell people all over the place, I would compare them to any federal policing agency, any state police. They go the extra mile, even if they have an uncooperative victim, or a victim who's changing their mind and wants to be a blind report. I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing what you're saying and what's coming into me. Are there some out there, bad apples? Of course. Of course. There's bad in everything. We also do the audits. We sit in the sexual assault response team, and I'm part of that auditing. And I have seen unfounded cases since, when did that article come out? 2010? I have seen unfounded cases go to almost nothing, where we almost never have an unfounded case to have an audit meeting about. And we all sit down and we look at them, and the documentation and the level in which policing seems to have become more victim-centered, whether it's community policing or trauma-informed edg... I don't know what it is. That's not my sandbox. But whatever it is, something seems to be working on our end.
I appreciate that, Debbie. Thank you.
And if I can just...
Just to add one more thing, I would say, just the fact that as an agency, in reference to the sexual assault cases, that we're no longer doing exceptional clearances, which that's like a best practice throughout, that shows that we're definitely more involved with caring about what happened to our victims and being trauma-informed.
I think Mr. Campanelli had a point.
So if I could just piggyback real quick on, you know, what BPD was saying, when we have joint cases, right, as soon as we identify that there's victims, we send our victim advocacy specialist out immediately. we send our victim advocacy specialist out immediately, right? And what we do is we work on everything we can to get those victims what they need. They need a cellphone, we give them a cellphone. They need clean clothes, we get them clean clothes. They need access to an NGO, we get them that NGO. They need access to Blue Dot, they need access to anybody who's in this room, we get them those resources as soon as physically possible. And then our victim advocacy specialist stays in contact with these victims throughout, beyond their cases, right? So the case ends, these victims have a chance to slip back into victimhood, right? So we make sure that our victim advocacy specialist stays in contact with these people to make sure that they have everything they need to continue succeeding in life, you know? So that's how we kind of approach our victim, you know, centered, trauma-informed approach through HSI, but specifically when we combat human trafficking in Baltimore City.
No, I appreciate that, and again, appreciate the feedback. Deputy Commissioner Worley, that, you know, this was a, you all asked for the report, and appreciate your testimony on this as well, and it's good to hear improvement. I will say that stands in stark contrast to what we heard a few weeks ago from Dr. Workin and her team. So there is a discrepancy. I will just say, and I'm gonna have a couple of questions for the school system. One thing we know about trauma is that hurt people hurt people. And so if we are not extremely careful in how we are interacting with folks who have been victimized, it is both more likely that they will be revictimized and also will victimize other people. And so would just stress this point, again, this came up at a previous hearing, that we really have to be extremely thoughtful and careful about how we are treating witnesses, victims, and just really differentiating and not lumping people into one category as potentially part of a crime, because that is not trauma-informed. But appreciate your responses. For the school system, Chief Davis, I remember being a teacher in West Baltimore and an experience I had with a student who was trafficked. I did not know that at the time. I didn't have either, I think, the vocabulary for it or a clear enough understanding as an educator of any of the signs or symptoms or even what to look for. I just know, I knew that the young person was there in school, and then he wasn't. And then he was there again, and then he wasn't, and ended up following up and found out that there was trafficking going on. This was back in, I think, 2008. For you all, I know that we don't have jurisdiction over our school system. We can't legislate Baltimore City schools. But I know that when Councilman Burnett passed the legislation to have signage at different facilities, are we doing that in Baltimore City schools?
Signage at different facilities? Could you elaborate a little on that?
Councilman, you want to just share briefly the-
We had a, we had a, this committee passed a bill that required signage being posted in government buildings across the city. We did not include city schools at the request of city schools in the legislation. One, couldn't mandate it, but two, aside from schools, there was a lot of concern about language that was appropriate, age-appropriate language. We put together like a subcommittee of the subcommittee for the Legislative Committee for the Collaborative. Sorry, there's a lot of committees here. And ultimately, the outcome from those sort of meetings involving city schools was that city schools didn't want to be included in the legislation. And so thus, the signage didn't go up in city schools.
And when you say signage, you mean signs of human trafficking, things like that?
Yeah, so what we've done in hotels and other jurisdictions, other spaces that we do have jurisdiction over is come up with signage that basically says like, if you're going through these types of things, you may be, you may be trafficked, here's the hotline number. And I would note that we did that in hotels and actually have gotten some referrals from people who've seen it in hotels to the Blue Dot work. Obviously, the language that we put in a hotel room is more adult-focused language. What we were trying to do on the city school side was to have child-appropriate language for obviously various age groups, obviously something that you would put to describe what may be occurring for a high school student needs to be different than what it would be for an elementary school student. And so we were trying to work through that, but didn't have the cooperation from city schools to try and do this. There was concerns about where it should be placed, and there were some, you know, we tried to work through it, you know, we'll put it in the, instead of putting it in the bathrooms, maybe that's not the best place for it, but some sort of common area. There was a lot of discussion on that, particularly because some of the school buildings are within the city's jurisdiction, particularly some charter schools or swing spaces are under our jurisdiction, and we could have included that in there, but wanted to be obviously, if we're gonna just do it in some buildings and not all of them, it didn't really make sense. And so that's what the councilman's referring to.
Yeah, I appreciate you going into detail with that. Things like bullying, for instance, we make sure we have something up. There's other posters and things we make sure we have up across the board. I was not privy of this before coming in here, so I feel like I gotta ask my people a little bit about this and figure out what the stance was. And so I would just ask you to-
Yeah, no-
Allow me to come back with any additional information? Because while we provide this stuff on curriculum and our role in the collaborative, this wasn't something that came up.
I definitely would appreciate if you could, you know, like I said, having been a teacher in West Baltimore and just not myself really having much understanding of what it looked like or what the sign, you know, even just knowing how to look for it, I actually think that would be extremely helpful to a lot of our educators in city schools. So if you could come back and let the committee or the council know, and I would hope that maybe we could change that stance and actually move forward with it.
Thanks.
Another question, Chief Davis. In addition to school police, who else from city schools participates in the collaborative? Like is leadership involved? Just again, knowing that this is definitely an issue that impacts our kids in Baltimore City public schools.
It's been school police.
What about school leadership? Anyone from North Ave, anyone from?
It's just been school police to this point.
Okay. I guess I would maybe make a suggestion that I think could be helpful at both a school level and a district level to have, in addition to just school police, educators themselves who, again, interact with our kids all the time, and ideally someone high up, like yourself, or someone else from North Avenue that could participate as well, just, you know, knowing the breadth and scope of this issue. And while it is certainly a criminal issue, knowing that, I think for educators, it, you know, we see it. Teachers see it, and they may not know how to interact with it or what to do about it, so.
Yeah, I think, as you know, Councilmember Cohen, there's a lot of things on teachers' plates, right? And just like you said, your experience, you weren't really sure how to go to that. I think that's why we make sure that our social workers have all been trained, and you know, as I, as the testimony earlier talked about that. And since we do have a social worker in every single school, and that's been something we've made sure has happened for the last four or five years, if we can figure out if there needs to be additional inclusion onto the collaborative, we'll figure that out.
Great. I think that'd be great. Thanks a lot, Chief Davis. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. All right, we are going to open up to public testimony. We're gonna allot three minutes to folks who wish to testify. We have just, I think, one person who signed up to testify, well, maybe two people who've signed up. First, starting with Colleen Lowell.
Oh, nope.
Nope, I'm sorry, Colleen. You've told us plenty tonight. Next, we have Angeline Branch. All right. And then online, we have Lisa Molak. Lisa, you've been unmuted.
My name is Lisa Molak. I am a survivor, a survivor human trafficker at 16 years old. I'm also the Executive Director of Let's Drive Baltimore, and I'm a part of the Human Trafficking Collaborative. So I just wanted to speak first as a survivor and then also speak next as part of the collaborative. I'm just giving my part of the testimony online because I couldn't make it in today. But as a survivor, I wanted to say that a lot of times you're afraid to speak up. You self-blame, and a lot of times becoming a victim of human trafficking, you put yourself in situations which you still have no control over as a child, but you feel like you're the blame because you walked into that situation. As myself, I was a runaway. But when I wanted to leave that situation with a grown man that knew better, I couldn't leave. I didn't know that I was being human trafficked. I was ashamed to speak up on a situation. I had to jump out of a third-story window to prevent myself from being shot, and I still didn't try to speak up because I was still ashamed and I felt like it was my fault. As far as our organization, we have a youth-led human trafficking collaborative, I'm sorry, committee. And what they do is our young people, they spread awareness to their peers on how to prevent from becoming victims of human trafficking. Prior to COVID, I was reaching maybe like 140 students a month in Baltimore City schools. I worked in two schools in the city, and that was Augusta Falls and Frederick Douglass. And we were meeting with the young people, maybe 35 children a week, providing information to them on how not, and 90% of the children that we spoke with, we surveyed, they did not know what human trafficking meant for a child. We do a lot of education, catering young people on social media and how these traffickers are trying to get our children through social media. They've gotten really slick with it. So a lot of times, it's not what people think in this white van that's gonna pull up and grab them. It's these people that's coming into their inbox or commenting under their posts, telling them that they can help them become a model, or they see them, you know, showing vulnerabilities, like they hate their parents or whatever may be going on in their home. So we educate young people on not to show those vulnerabilities, especially on social media. But we become those trusted people that they can talk to when they're having these issues. We've helped, so we've partnered with Turnaround Inc. and other agencies in the collaborative to actually help victims to get off out of these situations where we have to provide emergency shelter, I mean, putting them in hotels to help. And then for the young people, we've partnered with DSS to be able to provide safe haven. So we became those trusted messages for these young people because a lot of times, young people do not want to go in the system. But if they have someone that they can trust and let them know that this is gonna help you to get the resources and get out of your situation, a lot of times they will listen, but sometimes we may lose them, and that's hurtful because they don't want to go into the system. But we have been very successful in helping these young people to get out of these adult relationships where they're being forced to stay and things like that by partner with these agencies. We've also made reports to agencies because of, we found over 13 young girls in L. City being trafficked. So we've done that as well. So I think we've been very successful in opening up that door for young people to have a safe place that they can call. We've gotten calls, we've gotten reports, we've gotten people who needed more information. We make sure that they had, they know who to call, how to get in touch with somebody, you know, how to report what they're seeing. We do all of these things, and it's young people spreading this information. So that makes it really helpful because they're gonna listen to their peers as well before they listen to maybe some adults. And we also become that trusted message to connect them with agencies that can provide the services that they may need to get out of that situation. So I survived human trafficking, I survived gun violence. I was almost shot a few times as a child and as an adult by spouses.
Ms. Molak, can you begin to conclude your testimony, please? Thank you.
Okay, yeah, and that's it. And then I'll conclude my testimony with the family from Saturday. Monsey and my organization is helping to provide burial expenses as well as wraparound services and grief counseling for the young lady Maya who was murdered and her children. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I agree real quick. And when you talk about kids and the internet and what's going on, my daughter's a teacher, the third and fourth graders that are sexting is staggering on their phones. And I mean, mind-blowing. These are babies that are sexting and crying on the playground because other kids are excluding them because they won't do it. And then they get them all together and find out, guess what? There's two people in here who are men that live in wherever, and they think it's just a group of the little kids. So we're talking about vulnerabilities starting with our babies here in good homes, good family raising, if you will. I got a farm in the southern Maryland. I'm good family raising, right? This is, this is not just ACEs scores anymore. This is scary in what's happening. I would love to see something where phones could be turned off in the schools and not work. I know that that's a whole nother, you know, safety issue, but my gosh. So if y'all don't know about that, boy, that's a conversation y'all might want to have at the council, too.
Thank you both for bringing that up, Ms. Molak. And I think it's an important consideration, certainly something that we could talk a little bit more about, how the city and the council can maybe lead on that effort. But it's a big issue, yeah. And as the father of two little girls, I-
I was just saying, I'm never buying my daughter a phone.
Yeah, no, we're doing flip phones without cameras from now on. With that, are there any other folks who are here who'd like to testify? We've got one more.
Thank you so much.
Please, you've got three minutes.
Yes. My name is Allison Boss. I'm a forensic nurse examiner, and I've worked for Mercy since 2016. So I just want to say that the following agencies, I personally have taken care of Blue Dot patients. That would be BPD, B.C., EMS, Inland County, Baltimore County, Center for Hope, City of Refuge, Turnaround, Homeland, and Drink It The Well. And I will tell you, regardless of where our patients come from, it works. Blue Dot works. It is a systemic way to get medical care and treatment that is a standard across the board, whether or not patients identify themselves or we identify them for them. Patients come back, patients feel comforted by us, and people, every time they come, say there's nowhere else like it. So if we could make this a standard, we would change so many lives. That's it.
Excellent suggestion. Thank you. Any other folks looking to testify? Please. You've got three minutes.
My name is Rhonda Sanco. I'm the Executive Director of Armenta, which is one of the NGOs in the room. And I just want to say, many of you know this, my own child was trafficked, which is how I came to be the Executive Director of Armenta. And I know what it looks like at the dinner table, and I know what it looks like in the family. And it's absolutely devastating. And a lot of the conversation that we've had today has been really helpful. It's also kind of tracked some stereotypes, and I just want us to challenge ourselves on that because we are all vulnerable. The internet has changed the game, and COVID changed the game. And my daughter was trafficked before COVID. So it just is absolutely devastating. And we're kind of, from a public awareness perspective, we're chipping at the edges. The traffickers and the buyers, I mean, they have the system down. They know how to communicate. We can't get through to parents because parents are so frightened. They just glaze over, and it's terrifying. And so we somehow have to raise the volume because, I hate to say it, but really, all of our children are at risk. So I want to say that. I do want to say, from a trauma-informed policing perspective, it works. I, as a parent, encountered police officers who had been trauma-trained and though, or who paid attention, and those who didn't. And it works. My daughter's alive today because of it. Because trauma-informed police officers normalize it. They make you think you're not a freak. They make you think there's a place where maybe I can still belong. And it matters. And so this, I'm sorry, this matters to me. My team is like on every committee there is because I'm so behind the work this collaborative's doing, and I'm so grateful as a parent and as a leader. I'm grateful. This collaborative's not very old, and the impact it's making- This collaborative's not very old, and the impact it's making is tremendous, and we cannot let our foot off the gas. We cannot let our foot off the gas. It all matters. Every child's life matters, and the situation's not getting better. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're going to, we're going to close out. Councilman Burnett, any closing words? It's been a lot today. Anything you want to close with?
I mean, I thought that was it. The work continues. Again, I'm thankful for all of our partners in this work. The collaborative is sort of operated as a convener in many ways, and, but also a way to build capacity, a way to share information, a way to get resources out. And the folks that you've, the committee has heard from today are in the trenches, on boots on the ground, doing this work every single day, so I'm thankful for you. Wanted to say that publicly, I mean, I know I tried to say it in every one of our collaborative meetings, that I love you all and what you're doing, but in this space, just want to, just to, you know, know that the council's behind the work, if there's obviously more legislative matters that we need to take on, it sounds like we have a few more that arose through this work. And so thank you all for that. I also want to thank Kim from my team for convening this committee hearing. This was a tremendous amount of work to pull everybody together, to get questions out ahead of time, so that this would be a productive space for all of us, so that, you know, us as a body can do a deep dive. As you can see, it's like drinking through a fire hose as far as moving parts, and so just want to thank you for that, for making this happen, and thank you for the committee for thoughtful questions. And we are going to, we're not going to vote this out. We run to recess, or I've asked the chair to recess the hearing, so that we can come back and have regular, more ongoing conversations, particularly to lift up some of the issues that we didn't really get to today, because there's always seems to be a focus, and rightfully so, on sex trafficking of minors and adults. But obviously, we've, we've heard today, there needs to be a deeper dive on benefits trafficking, on labor trafficking, and some of the other areas that folks are being taken advantage of. So I do want to come back and give space for those issues as well, so thank you.
Looking forward to it. Thank you, Councilman. With that, this hearing is in recess.